Good evening, everybody. It is Monday, March 11th, 2019. We are on daylight savings time. So that means it's almost summer, right? It's almost summer. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its own right, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with the roll call.
Counselor Hilton.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos.
Present.
Counselor Katz.
Present.
Counselor Coulter.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Driggs.
Present.
Counselor Perry is absent.
Okay, good evening again. It is Monday, March 11th. We have the consent agenda. I guess I'll read through it. So we have approval of council meeting minutes from February 25th, regular and executive. Still haven't, at least me, I'm still having a little trouble hearing. Can you hear okay in the ... Okay, sorry. Approval of special council meeting minutes, March 4th. We have minutes from the Budget Committee, Historical Preservation Advisory Board, Historical Cemetery's Commission, various correspondence, the Department Monthly Report, and the Town Administrator. Looking for a motion to approve, I think as part of the motion, "I will abstain, I missed the February 25th meeting." Will there be, or any removals from the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. Will there be a motion to approve all five items?
I so move.
Second? All those in favor? Okay, and we have an open public forum. Before we get to our state delegation, do you have any other signups for the open forum?
There is one.
Ms. Barbara Martin on the topic of the solicitor. Ms. Barbara Martin, please.
At the December 27th Town Council meeting, one of the reasons given for rushing to hire an interim town solicitor to fill the position until the end of the 2018-2019 fiscal year was that it would take at least three months to do the requests for proposals to hire a law firm to represent Tiverton. It was repeated several times by counselors Katz and Coulter that they didn't want to rush through the RFP process and wanted to do it correctly. We have three and a half months until the end of the fiscal year. My question to the council, especially counselors Coulter and Katz, when do you propose to begin the RFP process so that we can hire a full-time town solicitor by July 1st?
The answer will be March 25th. Which is the next regularly scheduled meeting of the council?
Is this working?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that's the only item I had on the open forum. We now have, as part of the open forum, sort of an open, an open forum if you will, with our state delegates, those present here, our senators Philag and Svenny, and representatives Edwards and Canario. Are any of you present here?
They're all here.
Roger.
Thank you, sorry, I just came in.
Mr. President, I just wanted to let you know that Senator DePalma contacted me last week when we sent the invitation, but also tonight. He is in Florida, so he's unable to ...
Sure.
Hi, guys.
Good evening, thanks, thank you for all coming. Do we want to do just maybe a quick introduction for those? I know many of us know each other. I'm having trouble hearing as well. Is it just, is it just hearing issues?
Hello? Hello? I think you can hear me, right?
And those in the back hear us?
I can't hear you.
I can't hear me either, so it's, maybe it's, maybe it's just my microphone?
Can you hear me now?
That is, is that ... So it's just, just this unit, is that the problem?
Yeah. So, so used, Donna is.
All right, how are you doing on that one? Is that ...
Yeah, he's good.
Working out the AV here. That does sound a little better. Okay. Just a quick introduction, is that, is that okay?
Nancy Mello, Town Clerk.
Giovanni F. Jones, Town Solicitor.
Yeah, that's my Town Administrator.
Nancy Driggs, Town Council Member.
Donna Cook, Counselor.
Robert Coulter, Council.
Justice Katz, Council.
Denise DiMederos, Council.
Tricia Hilton. I'm a counselor, that's why I have to sit up here.
Yeah, do you want to just quickly, it's hard with the video in the back, but ...
Representative Canario.
Representative Edwards.
Jim Sevigny, State Secretary.
State Senator Walter Philag.
Thank you again for all coming. It's an open floor. I think we had, at least with Senator Philag, we had a little bit of a conversation at the joint Town Council, Budget Committee, School Committee Workshop.
So I can be quiet tonight?
No, actually quite the contrary. We talked a little bit about if there's anything that we can do to support, I know we're just one town, but if there's things that we can do to support your efforts at the state level, and then of course if there's anybody, you know, on this side of the table, if we have any questions or concerns or how we could help each other. I think this is a custom practice that's happened, you know, usually happens once a term. So why don't I open the floor with you and let us know if there's any particular initiatives or priorities that you have on your mind, or things that you're looking for feedback from us, or things that we can do to support, or if there's anything, and then we'll turn to the table and see if there's anything that we'd like to talk about.
My history with these is traditionally, when we come here, the council tells us what they're looking for. Not usually vice versa.
Okay.
If we need anything, we generally send it through your Town Administrator, through your Town Clerk.
Okay. So you'll, you've won the coin toss, but you're deferring to the other team, is that? Any, okay. All right, with that, I'll open it up. Is there any comments or questions from the council?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Donna.
Can we take turns? No?
Go ahead, Donna.
It's okay.
Which one is working? All right. That's the problem. All right. I do have before you a 2009 resolution from Westerly. I had seen it quite a few months ago, thought it, thought it was significant that even from 2009, we have even more mandates. Westerly, and I think Tiverton, and most towns and cities are really tired of the mandates because it really, the mandates are taxes. And one of the things they talk about is the state mandates not subject to reimbursement are elections, assurance of due process, the notification and conduct of public meetings, the procedures for administrative and judicial review of actions taken by cities and towns, the protection of the public from malfeasance, misfeasance, and nonfeasance for local government officials, financial administration, including the levy assessment, collection of taxes, the preparation and submission of reports necessary for the efficient administration of state laws. Now, I'm not going to go through all. You do have a list. I don't think too much has changed, except there's probably even more mandates. And I think unfortunately for Senator Philag, I kind of touched on this at the School Committee meeting, and he said it was a little unfair because he was all by himself. But the fact of the matter is, is if you're not going to continue to pay for something forever, don't mandate it. Because I think that's very unfair. Because as, as a town or a city, we are our own, and you then kind of take over what we can afford and not afford. So please take a look at this. It is from 2009 from Westerly. I think it's very well put together. I don't even know if, if anyone looked at it way back in 2009, or whether it's just tossed aside, that I don't know. But old laws need to be looked at, and also mandates need to be slowed down.
Counselor, if I could interject here really quickly. You talked about two issues that I've actually been working on.
Okay.
And I worked with a rep from Westerly when this, when this was put in, in 2010. And I have legislation that goes to House Finance every year that requires the state to pick up the tab on any mandate that's over 50% to the towns. And you're free to look that up. I'm trying to find it on my cell phone while we're waiting here. And you talked about old laws. For the last six years, I've introduced on the House side a committee, joint committee, to go in and review old laws, unconstitutional laws, and have them removed from our books. I was unsuccessful getting the committee through, so last year I introduced 35 different pieces of legislation that were old, archaic, or unconstitutional. And we had a number of them passed by the House. The Senate chose not to pass them because they're preferring to use the committee. So I've already addressed your two points, I think, fairly successfully, so.
Okay.
We're sharing a microphone.
Okay.
This one's working. This gets to my question, I think, from the joint workshop. Is it, as a, as a practical matter, does, do resolutions of support help when you, when you sponsor a legislation?
Absolutely.
Or is it, you know, it's just another town, or? Okay, so if we add a list of those and we back them?
Sure. You get it to us and that gives us ...
And we have done that in the past.
Gives us some guidance, sure.
How often does it help the cross, the town-to-town cross? You know, we get a lot of correspondence from other towns that are, we're doing this, we're doing that. Do you find that, does that also help?
In our end, it doesn't hurt, it doesn't help at all. Also, we're, also we're seeing is the individual towns come forward.
Okay. So if you, if you gave us a list of the items that you're sponsoring and we signed on it, that would make some difference.
If you go on the General Assembly website.
Right.
You can, you can check off any one, any one of our names as the prime sponsor in a bill, and you can see every single thing we are the prime sponsor on. And if there's a bill that interests you, you can tag it, and you'll get notifications when the bill is being heard, or any, anything that is actually happening with the bill. Rhode Island's General Assembly has one of the most transparent assemblies in the country.
And I'm sorry, I should probably know this, but can there only be one prime sponsor?
Yes.
Okay.
One prime.
That's a big deal. Many co-sponsors, but only one prime.
I know, maybe I'm looking in the wrong place when I look to see who's sponsoring what, like if I just go to one particular senator or, or representative, I, I don't know, nothing comes up. Maybe I'm doing it wrong. I, I just find it, yeah, all right. So anyway, I just thought that brings you to your attention because it makes it really tough for the towns. And I don't agree with the 50%. If, if you're going to mandate it, it needs to be 100%. Sorry.
Well, you'd be lucky to get anything. So putting it in a 50% council is a, is a large step forward.
I don't agree with it.
What was the number of that bill? Do you happen to know?
I'm trying to bring it up, I can't.
I tried to find it, too.
The legitimate service.
Yeah.
You can get, are you trying that one?
It's right there.
Password?
The password's over there. Um, yeah, it is, right up, yeah.
If you can read it, it's an eye chart also.
It's Snapper. Want my glasses?
It's getting harder over the years.
Yeah, I'd like, well, I'd like to be next, but it really isn't my issue, it's a whole council issue. As you know, we're dealing with Bay Street, which we've dealt with for years and years.
I'm sorry, where is it?
Bay Street and the contamination, and the wastewater has been in front of us twice within the last month. We need to do a lot of work down there. Some of those roads are town-owned, and we admit that. We are responsible for putting the piping to the property line, and then the owners will join up with the settlement. But the problem is, is Bay Street. Now, as long as I've been here, there's been a conflict on what, whether Bay Street is a state road, or whether it's a town road. It's funny, some days it's a, a state road and some days it's a town road, depending on what the problem is. So we talked about having the state look into this, and what you guys think what Bay Street is. Because there's a lot of work that needs to be done on Bay Street, and quite frankly, the town can't afford it without taking some kind of lien out.
I actually contacted Rhode Island DOT this afternoon about this.
Oh, you did, perfect.
And spoke to them on Bay Street. Here's how it works. You have two entities that I understand want to get into the streets down there to make these sewer connections. You have the wastewater district, and you have, I believe it's the North Tiverton Water District.
Yes.
If the state owns the road, the entity, the public utility that wants to get in and do the work would be responsible for excavation, putting the pipe in, and replacing the soil. They can replace the contaminated soil from what I understand, I'll get that in writing. But any excess soil that comes out of the excavation would be the responsibility of that utility.
Even the contaminated soil that has to be removed before we replace with, with good soil?
The utility that's making the excavation would be responsible.
So that would be the same thing for the town of Tiverton, then?
Yes. Well, I don't know how your ordinances work, I just talked with the state, that's what they've very clearly laid out. So why would, you can look at it logically. If, if Cox Cable wanted to come in and cut up all your streets in a contaminated area and put their cable in, that would force, they would be able to force the town to come in and do all the excavation in contaminated area to put, so they could put their cable in? Doesn't work that way. They're a public utility, they have the right to put their stuff in your streets, but they also have to do the excavation and takes, take care of the contaminated materials on their own.
You're saying in that analogy, Cox would have to do that?
I'm just using Cox as an analogy.
I know, I know, but in your analogy, you're ... But it would be wastewater, or it would be the water district.
Wastewater. Natural gas would be a perfect example. Prove gas or naturally, N-grid gas would come in, they would take care of their own excavation in your street, they would be 100%, 100% responsible for the excavation, putting their own pipe in, putting in the backfill, and if there's any excess material that came out of the excavation, they'd be responsible for taking care of it. Representative Edwards, I think, I think the concern, and I've, I've only just started to look at this, so I apologize if I don't have as much good information as you do, but I think the concern that the council expressed to me at the last meeting was not so much where the technical liability stands, but it just seems incredibly inefficient, I guess, to, to take that as the only view of the issue. Because we have sewer, we have water, we have state ownership of, of at least the main road there. And every time somebody lists that up, given the settlement agreement with DEM, there is a great expense to moving that soil, removing some of that soil, identifying the soil as contaminated, so that the next person that digs doesn't, you know, contaminate themselves. And it, it's such an issue that the, the cost to each of those utilities, including the state, when the state has a, a need to repave its own road, it's just an incredibly inefficient process. And if there were some mechanism, and I think only the state could drive this, if there were some mechanisms to say that these, these utilities should be, all be done at once, the remediation should all be done at once, and we're going to find a funding stream, and maybe that is being shared amongst the various utilities and the state and the town, but, but right now, there doesn't seem to be a mechanism to do that. And so what we're going to do over the next five, 10, 20 years is have utilities dig up again and again, do their little piece of it, pay triple because of the contamination, and in the end, we'll have, we'll have paid massive sums of money for what could have been dealt with if the state could sort of take control, I guess. Or the town could coordinate it through its DPW. It could coordinate when, when a utility goes in, make sure all utilities go at the same time. We do this in construction all the time.
I think that's what we're trying to do now, and that's why the Water District has come to us, plus the wastewater has come to us, that we all do it at once. But it is a large amount of money, and apparently, well, we all know that the Water District and, and wastewater cannot afford that. They don't have that kind of money available, so they're coming to us for help. And we're at a loss right now because it's millions of dollars, and ...
Is that from Bob Hoffman?
Yeah. Yes, and Lee Wyde. Are you saying when you coordinate in construction, then everybody does, if there's three, it's one, three, one ...
We open the street one time, all utilities go in at the same time, everything gets backfilled, everything gets paved. Unless you're in Providence, then they, as soon as you get brand-new pavement down, they go back and cut it open three or four times.
I mean, who pays for it? Is it split the three ways between everyone who's in there?
Yeah, everyone pulls a permit, everyone pays, plays a piece of the action.
But Nancy, they talked about that, don't you remember? That's why they were both in front of us, because if they're going to open it up, they're opening it up together.
And every utility would have to go to the state to go into its road also. There'd be special permits required?
Yes, see?
You just don't, you can't just open a state road. No, no, and that's, and I, I'm sorry, I ...
But we don't know which one, we don't know, we're not certain which roads are state.
Oh, is it going to get me a map?
Okay, okay.
Oh, that, just that area.
Bay Street is a state road. I know it is, but, well ...
Who plows it and maintains?
We do. And that's the problem. But we maintain and plow a lot of roads that really aren't ours. So I'll be honest with you, even private roads, so ...
We'll find out, and I'll get back to you on the Bay Street.
Because of past practices where someone has decided, yes, we need to plow that, and blah, blah, blah. But, but I think Bay Street's a state road, so that, but that's what my question is.
I'll know within a few days whether Bay Street's a state road, and what their actual permit process is.
Perfect.
And I'll pass that on to Jan.
My understanding from our discussions was that if it's opened up, the town has, has to do their remediation piece per the settlement? Was I incorrect in that?
Not if it's a state road.
Well, I mean, but the towns we own, right?
No, it's not clear, though. If you really read it, it's not clear.
Okay, so basically, we're hearing that ...
Were you involved in the talks when it was going on? Because that's exactly what was discussed. And you were just ...
Yes.
Too, that's exactly how it was discussed.
And the number's grown exponentially.
Yes, you were not responsible, Justin.
Yeah. There was a set amount of money, if I remember correctly, set aside for the town's use, for remediation, for the towns, for the town roads. Some on A Connell, some on the corner.
You were on the council back then, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That's why I know, I asked Bob Hoffman. Because I asked him in, in exact session, how much it was going to be, and it was not the number he told you. The number now is what I guessed it would be back then.
Mm-hmm. Well, I think the concern is who's going to be able to afford this, and it needs to be done for the residents. But at this point, we really, the question is, is Bay Street a state road?
I think the question you really want to do here is see if you can get some federal grant for this. You probably want to go through Sicilini's office.
Oh, okay.
I guess just to summarize, this seems like an area where there, we might be looking for state help, if not coordination. It's a, it's a tough issue. We've tackled tough issues before.
I think you should look at what the settlement was. There was a settlement for in that area.
They're definitely ...
The funds put aside for the sewer.
There's still a little bit left.
It seems to be the case that the, there's no possibility that the settlement funds, although they may have, may or may not have taken care of the homeowners, could possibly remediate the, the town or state, depending on who owns the, the roads, to the tune of $5 to $10 million. I'm told that $10 million is perfect, and $5 million is reasonable. So I'm hearing that that's the number, which is a pretty big number. And there's, yeah, we have, we have a few hundred ...
I think there's $325,000 left.
Right. So we're, we're talking about, you know, it's, it's hard to see how, how we do that. I don't know if there's a state sort of superfund site the way that the feds have. But this is, if, if we're here to tell you of sort of our tough issues, that we, we're not sure we crack the code all by ourselves, it's probably pretty high to the top of the list, if not at the top of the list.
What kind of federal aid are you thinking is there?
There's a lot of stuff. Well, I mean, we've got a couple instances down there at A Connell. I've, I've been able to get through, once the Jacreys' office, one through, once through Sicilini's office, I was able to get EPA to come in and get rid of the mercury on A Connell Street. It's happened twice since I've been in the House.
There is federal clean, there is federal clean water money available. And the issue with them needing a sewer is that the septic leachit, right, from the neighborhood, is now, you know, surpassed the land's capacity to deal with it. They've got all these cesspools, so you're basically leaching that right out into, into the Secana River, which, if I'm not mistaken, that area of the river has been declared impaired in part because of the septic leachit. So I, I think there's a logical clean water issue there to potentially approach the federal government with, for, for, you know, some help for the Water District and the Sewer District to be able to, you know, resolve the contamin, the, the water contamination issue, maybe.
That's similar to what happened in Portsmouth.
Yeah, same thing.
The sewage going into the, seeping into the water.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
So just to attempt to sum up, so we're working on ownership of Bay Street, which is an important, but one small part of this. The advice is to reach out to the federal delegation, and particularly, Mr. Sicil, Sicilin, sorry. And I, I think we're going to have another work, I, I'm confident we're going to have another workshop on this, or some activity on our end. So perhaps we'll kind of keep you in the loop on that and then figure out if there's, but it, it doesn't sound like there's a state superfund, fund, so to speak, but that you might be able to help us facilitate the federal conversation, or?
That's what I've done with the past, my constituents down there.
Jay, it might be helpful if you do come to the next workshop, because like I said, you were on the Town Council back then, and we kind of have been looking at the history of this, and your opinion would be very much appreciated, because you do go back in history with this, if that's possible.
So that's why I say I'm really old.
Yeah. Well, I'm just as old as you, but, but it might be helpful if you are there, because you were, I thought that you were there for the original discussion.
I was there for the end agreement.
Yes, yes.
Is there a chance of just a, you know, not to be too crass about it, but just a, a markup to a budget that just says, you know, X matching state funds would be supplied, or is that just not feasible?
No. You have four, four members on your delegation are on one, one House's Finance Committee. I don't think you're going to see any attachments to the budget, especially like a carve-out for a town. She's got $60 million in, in fees and added revenues that are coming out of nowhere that I think are going to be cut, so you're going to see some chopping. You're not going to see a whole lot of additions to the budget overall.
And there's no sort of pool there to try to tap into?
There's no pool.
There's nothing there? Okay.
Is there an environmental bond this year?
No.
I think you ... I can get with your, your town manager, and set a meet with, with one of the feds, and we'll see what we can do from there.
Perfect, thank you.
So, does anybody else?
Jan knows all the players up there, anyway.
I, I didn't know if anybody else wanted to go, I ...
Yeah, do you mind if we tag along? Or is that?
I have no problem with it.
Yeah, sure. Do you want to?
No, I was talking about, I was talking about other things to bring up.
Oh, absolutely.
I didn't, I ...
Can we close out Bay Street? Is that, okay, sure, go ahead.
So, just two things. One is, and this is, this is a pretty regular thing with me, but that is my, my own personal dislike for initiatives that come out of the state that step on local zoning. And, you know, the Enabling Act allows us to manage our own zoning, so when we see things that are coming that are directives from the state, one example right now is the solar bill that's there, which again, steps on the toes of local zoning. And not that the state doesn't have some rights as far as, you know, their desire for solar, but when it starts to override our local zoning code, it becomes difficult. but when it starts to override our local zoning code, it becomes difficult. You know, zoning isn't a one-size-fits-all thing, so often when things come out of the state legislature, it may be fine for, you know, 34 of the 39 communities, but the five that it's not fine for, it's really problematic. So, I would ask that you keep that in mind. We often seem to end up on the short end of the stick when it comes to things that affect our local zoning. And as I said, the, the current solar bill, for example, you know, is one, given the nature and the geographic makeup of Tiverton. And the second thing has.
Let's stay on that issue, please. What I would advise is for you as a council to send us correspondence relative to that bill number and the impact on the community. As you know, or may not know, we usually have around 2,400 bills a year, 1,300 in the House of Representatives, 1,100 in the state, and the bills are dispersed into various committees. So, if you're not on that committee where that bill is, you're not privy to hearing that bill unless you walked in and, you know, heard the testimony, and so you have no idea where the bill is located, or how the ultimate outcome may come about until it comes on the floor, and then they'd be too late to offer any amendments or any type to exclude a particular town site. So, anytime you have a bill that you feel might be going somewhere, then it'd be wise to send that correspondence to us.
Okay, Patricia, could I just add something sort of on your topic, the same line? I was going to address this, and I was looking over the bills, and I agree with Patricia, there are a couple of solar bills pending. And my initial read of it, it looks like at this point that they're not mandatory in the sense that if a municipality doesn't comply with giving a siding, a solar siding ordinance to the state, they may not be able to participate in, in the funding, and, you know, renewable funding, that kind of thing, but that's it. And, but then there was another bill, I think by, by you, Jay, dealing with if a solar array does take a particular site in a residential piece that, that the town shall create, or the state will create, another density, you know, it's like equalizing the density, moving it, which really is a zoning issue. And again, it doesn't look like it's mandatory yet, but that was gonna be one of my questions, whether you foresee any of this. There's an awful lot of green energy coming out of this particular governor, and is it going to be mandatory at some point that every municipality does have to have a solar? Because we just went through having to repeal our solar ordinance for a lot of reasons.
Yeah, I'm not the sponsor of that bill, I'm just a co-sponsor. I believe that's from Representative Bennett, who's the chairman of Natural Resources, so.
Okay.
And he's my seatmate, so I sign a lot of his legislation.
Oh, well, so my concern was whether it's mandatory, but I share Patricia's concern.
I believe it's enabling.
At this point, it is enabling. I'm just not sure what the future holds.
I mean, we haven't really discussed it as a council, I was just using that as an example of a, you know, of a, of a bill that has a zoning component to it, that, you know, that isn't always easily implemented in every community, and it's more of the concept of, you know, one-size-fits-all doesn't really work for zoning. We, I don't know that the rest of the council's discussed it, so it might be worth putting it on the agenda for our next meeting, and if the council then decides we wanna send a resolution to you, then we can do that. The second thing that I, I wanted to ask about is funding for enforcement, because it, it does seem like many of the state agencies that have rules and regulations and requirements just don't have any money for enforcement these days. I mean, the DEM has no money for enforcement, Border Health doesn't have any money for enforcement. So, you know, we've got all these state rules and regulations that, that, you know, we're supposed to be enforcing, there's no backup when we call, when we need anybody. So, just a, you know, a general thought is that if we're gonna have these agencies, and we're going to have all these rules and regulations, somebody's gotta have the wherewithal to enforce them. And as a community, we often need help, and it's very difficult to get support, because they're just, you know, and whether or not that's an agency issue, meaning they decide how they're spending their funds, and, you know, they're not allocating enough resources, I'm not necessarily saying that's something that the General Assembly's done. But pushing these agencies, if they're gonna have these regulations to have some assistance for enforcement, would be really great, too.
I think you have three DEM officers who live in town.
Yes, but they cover the entire state. There are three who cover the enti, they happen to live here, but they cover the.
All three of them live here.
They, they cover the entire state, and so it, it's.
There's more than three.
Hard to get them.
Open floor, any other questions or comments?
I would like to see if there's anything to be done about reciprocity for building officials so that it's easy for Massachusetts or Connecticut, building officials to easily get a Rhode Island license. It's very difficult to get people to apply. I think not only are we having a problem, but I think other people, and since there isn't any reciprocity, someone from Massachusetts is close by can't, can't apply. And vice versa, over near Connecticut, where, where we're near, some towns near Connecticut could possibly use reciprocity for building officials on that end. We live near Massachusetts, but, anyway, just asking if.
On this particular issue, the codes are different between the states.
Right.
There are similarities, but the codes are different. So, you could bring an official in from Massachusetts, or you could bring one in from Connecticut, and they might not see the codes the same way. The only way we're gonna get reciprocity for building officials cross-border is to have the other state recognize ours as well. We recognize them, and that's a pretty difficult issue. States are generally loathe to let their people go. If a state like Massachusetts gives Rhode Island reciprocity, it opens a door for all their people who are in border towns to come across and work for Rhode Island, and they tend to lose them. So, they tend to keep their people required under their state law, under their state codes, so that they're hanging on to them.
That's what we're shooting for.
Yeah.
May I just follow up on that? If I'm not mistaken, Representative, it used to be reciprocal between Rhode Island and Massachusetts, and I believe Rhode Island stopped that, if I'm not mistaken.
Was, when Massachusetts went off with one of the international codes.
Right.
They went off like with Make 7 or something, and Rhode Island did not follow suit.
Right, and I think the state building commissioner may be more interested in getting back to reciprocity, because he knows that there are umpteen municipalities in the state that have a hard time getting a building official. So, I think what we're just saying is, you know, to the extent this is a possibility, I think they are different, but on the other hand, there are a lot of similarities as well. It could certainly help us, because we have a very difficult time getting candidates for that position, and it's a key position.
If I may just add briefly, there's, there's also, and I don't, I don't have the model legislation reference handy, but I know there's been a movement on much professional regulation to provide exceptions for former military folks who may be out of the service but may have had some relevant experience, and a lot of states are saying that, well, you know, we, we will provide some sort of authority to, to the oversight boards to give those folks a waiver essentially on the licensing if they've had practical experience that just wouldn't apply to the, to the way that Rhode Island, for example, certifies. So, if you, you did it in Iraq, of course, the, you know, the code's gonna be different, but at least you get somebody in the door with, with nuts and bolts experience as opposed to having a vacancy in a building official's seat.
I've submitted a lot of legislation relative to military personnel that's moved from one state to another, allowing reciprocity to take place.
Like for teachers.
Even if it's just on an interim basis, perhaps?
Was that it done? I just had, I had one question for Representative Edwards. You have a bill 5662, which guarantees, mandates overtime wages for firefighters who work over 42 hours.
That's correct.
In an average, did you happen to estimate how much that would cost the town?
I believe the town's currently in negotiations, and it might not affect the town at all until your next, your next contract.
Well, I, I happen to, I'm on the negotiating subcommittee, and I, I happen to have become familiar with their scheduling, and this particular legislation would be about just under $200,000 cost to the town.
Unless you went to three platoons.
Well, we're, we're having very productive, very productive negotiations, and even then, there's gonna be a substantial cost to this legislation, and it's actually potentially gonna get in the way of our resolving our negotiations.
Well, council, there are only three towns in the state that actually have the 48 hours. Tiverton, one of the fire districts in Coventry, and North Kingstown, so.
Well, you happen to represent one of those.
This is also an issue for the firemen, and safety for the firemen.
Right, but we're in productive negotiations, and it'd be helpful.
Your administrator called me on this.
Well, I have the opportunity of you here, and I wanted to express, as a town council.
If you notice, I'm the only one on the bill, it's a leadership bill, that's coming down from the speaker. So, I'm the one who put it in, because I happen to have one of the towns, but this bill is from the leadership.
But we didn't vote for.
I know you didn't.
So, it affects three towns?
Three towns.
And he put it in on behalf of the speaker, he's saying.
Yes, I get it.
So, so.
Again, just a quick follow-up. I think this stems from the difference between the traditional 42-hour cycle and some communities going to a 56-hour cycle, which a lot of the firefighters don't like. So, the question is if a town and a union manage to have negotiations that might have them end up in the middle with a compromise, but that compromise is still over the 42-hour limit that's in this legislation, it basically interferes with the ability to come to that compromise. That's our concern. And even though it may not affect, you know, the, the contract that we managed to finalize this time, it would affect us for the next contract. And if between the firefighters and the municipality, we think that there may be a reasonable, and we're not done yet, and I need to be careful with what I say, but if there is a reasonable possibility of striking this compromise, and it works for both sides, then it would be good that we could just get that done.
There's a lot, a lot of water has to cross under the bridge before this bill becomes law.
Yeah.
I put one in previously at the behest of the Providence firefighters when they were trying, they were negotiating, and the mere presence of the bill pushed the negotiations the proper way. So, I mean, a lot of times, the presence of legislation will. Push both, both parties into real negotiation.
Well, it would push. That could be looked at differently, though, because it's, it's gonna put, it would push the town more than the firefighters into the go, right?
It depends how fast you negotiate, you know, this bill has only been heard once.
Yeah, but it's very.
It has, it has to be heard again, it has to come out through committee, it has to go to the House floor, they don't have to cross over to the Senate, and have to be heard in their committee, have to go back to the floor, then have to go to the governor, something like that. You wouldn't see it until probably June.
I don't see any, I don't see any allowance in this legislation for the grandfather and previously negotiated contracts, so if we negotiate something.
It's in there. Yeah, to the very end.
It is in there at the end, but it's, it's. Is it in?
I guess I'm a little confused as to, as to why anyone would interfere in that way with the town being able to negotiate with a union where representative in-laws are being put into place to stymie the town from being able to financially stay afloat by these laws being in place. It takes, it takes away from being able to negotiate freely. I, I just, I don't agree with it at all.
That's your prerogative, counselor. We believe that the, the safety of the firemen and women are paramount, and putting people on 48-hour straight shifts is not really good for them.
You also have to be cognizant of how much it costs and what the towns can afford. So, I think that you really shouldn't be involved in that at all.
I don't wanna prolong this, but I, I do think it's important to keep in mind that the proposal for the 48 hours came from the firefighters, not from the town.
And that legislation was, was in working with the state fire, fire departments.
I believe that.
Just for clarity, when you say we believe, all four of you, that's your position of all four of you, or you mean you and your co-sponsors?
I'm the only one on the bill.
You're the only one on the bill.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you can hear the bill. Like I said, it's 2,400 bills.
No, I, I just, I just wanted to. That's okay.
It's not gonna happen.
Okay.
So.
That's why it's imperative that you let us know.
Sure, sure.
Your issues.
So, the way I read this, then, were we to negotiate terms that conflicted with this now, those terms would no longer be available the next time we negotiated the contract.
That's correct.
So, even if, even if in our very positive negotiation with our firefighter, we find a system that works for everybody involved, it's working great, three years from now, the contract's up, the state says, sorry.
If it's working great, counselor, what you do is you just get a hold, have your union contact the state fire, fire departments, and they'll put in, we'll put in legislation on their behalf.
State Fire Departments, is that?
The state, State Fire Association, thank you.
The, the union, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, so that's who we would go to to change our legislation?
No, you go through your local union.
So, but we would go through the union to get legislation, you're saying?
You could go through the union to get legislation changed, if your union agreed. Or if, as everyone thinks, this 48 hours is gonna be detrimental to the, you know, the life of your fireman, you'll come up with something else.
Okay, so, we don't go to our representatives and senators, we go to the unions instead?
Any other topics of interest from, on? So, just trying to sum up as we're approaching an hour, it sounds like, and of course, we're, we're here to talk about the tough issues, not the easy ones, so, so Bay Street, you know, that obviously sounds like a tough one, of course, we know that. There's some land use issues, which I think is perennial, you know, tension, perhaps healthy tension between the state and the local municipalities, and recognizing, solar in particular is a subset, is an issue that I'm quite certain this town has wrestled with, passed an ordinance, repealed an ordinance, it's still working its way through. It's a relatively new, I suppose I shouldn't say new technology, but a new issue in a land use perspective. Sounds like at least some disagreement on one particular bill on overtime, and then just this general feedback on, you know, mandates, which I know comes up. Again, that's probably part of a healthy tension that you see. And again, I know you represent other towns, of course, we're your favorite town, I know that, but realistically, practically, if there's things that, I know you sign, there are a lot of bills, you co-sponsor a lot of bills, but if there are prime bills that you're definitely looking for support, we may not always agree, but I suspect we'll agree on many of them. If it's practical, then we can support you either with a, I forget which one of you sent a letter, I don't know if testimony.
Resolution, a council resolution.
If in-person testimony makes a difference in a practical sense, I mean, we're not looking to waste people's time, but if you think that really can be helpful.
Now, having a resolution sent to the committee.
That's definitely helpful. I mean, we had an issue a couple of years ago relative to farms, utilization of weddings, and things of that nature, and I thought it was very effective. The council in Tiverton sent a resolution to us, made us aware of that particular bill so that we could bring it to leadership and say, hey, this is impacting my community, because I have 100 farms, what's the potential here in Tiverton, or what's the potential in Little Compton? And the bill was, you know. And the bill was, you know...
Yeah, especially in Little Compton, that was very useful as well, so...
And is it, for those of us that are a little bit amateurs at politics, is it, is it harder on the House side than it is on the Senate representing an outlying, non-urban district, or is, do you face the same pressures?
No, it's definitely the same.
It's the same in both?
I'd actually like to ask a question because we had a recent debate from a budget perspective here over our membership in the League of Cities and Towns. So, I'd like to ask your perspective on the effectiveness of the league and whether or not communities that have banded together via the league for or against a certain measure, what your perspective is on, on how that affects a bill?
The League of Cities and Towns is your advocate. You know, most of the, most of the issues and, and what they come down on with those issues relate to protection of the town's ability to manage properly within budgets and all of that. So, they are your advocate, they're at all the hearings, and that's the entity that's going to have perhaps a different perspective than lobbyists for, well, some of the organized labor stuff and all that. So, if you're going to, if you're going to participate in the League of Cities and Towns and pay whatever that freight is, I don't know, what you get out of that principally is the league is always at the committee meetings where they're hearing the bills that, that may end up costing municipalities more money and they normally have something to say about that. And from what I've seen over the past couple of years, they bring plenty of facts and data and history to bear, so they present a pretty good argument.
And I believe every year they send out a pamphlet to each of the legislators as to what their priorities are and what issues the legislators should be aware of that may be coming down the block.
Can you talk about the firemen's bill? The League of Cities and Towns are the only people who are there in opposition.
Right, but apparently not successfully.
They weren't there.
But apparently, apparently it depends on what the leadership and the unions want, not what the, what our representatives or what our advocate in the League of Cities and Towns wants. I mean, I, my position on the League of Cities and Towns has always been that we elect our advocates to the State House.
Actually, we represent the people of the district, we do not represent the separate towns, we do not represent the town council, we do not represent your, your school committee, we do not represent your budget committee, we represent the fifteen or thirty thousand people within our districts. That's a, that's a little bit of confusion.
We represent them. We represent those people also.
Yes.
I think we agree. Okay, open floor, any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
It happens that tomorrow I'm going to a meeting at the Board of Elections. I don't know if you've seen some of these election incentives that the Board of Elections is trying to get passed this year, but I, they're going to be, there's been committees from the Clerks Association working with them. I'm going to be there tomorrow for a meeting where they're going to be explained further. So, can I assume that should the clerks go along with these election legislation, I could just attach them to a memo and send them to you?
Sure.
And one other little item is we had some charter amendments approved in November and I've got them prepared and a resolution for the council to approve, so is that just a matter of sending it to you?
You send that with a council resolution.
Right, with the resolution, but I just have to send it to representative, send it to all of you?
Sure.
Okay.
Usually what happens is among us, we decide who will be the main sponsor of the bill and the other two are the co-sponsors. I believe last year you sent us three, so it worked out well on the Senate side. Each one was a sponsor and the other were co-sponsors.
What's for the prime, prime sponsors?
I, I know the session's early, but is, is there a deadline, a practical deadline for getting resolutions, town resolutions through?
For cities and towns, there's no deadline. I got a resolution through in my second term like the last week.
We would prefer to have...
I think that's sort of what I was asking, but...
Whether it passes or not.
I had to really move it, but we, we did get it through.
Maybe end of April, is that...
Yes, that's fine. That's, that's all budget.
Yeah, think about before school break.
Okay. I'd like to thank all of you for taking the time to come out and for your efforts to represent all of us, certainly be in touch. And again, if we can support your efforts, you know, don't hesitate to reach out and we'll, we'll have a good debate, but I'm sure most of the time we'll...
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I'm still having a little trouble hearing myself, but I assume you can hear me or don't want to, is it my, well, I am, I am a little under the weather.
Yeah, you're a little more.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Taking too much Day Quill, I think. So, get the gavel. My, my goal is to see if I can, I notice every meeting it gets closer and closer. We are now sitting as a board of licensing, this is an advertised public hearing. TRDR Incorporated doing business as Red Dory Restaurant, that's on Main Road, eighteen forty-eight Main Road, requesting a transfer of the BV liquor license to Dory Go, comma, Inc. That's also doing business as Red Dory, which itself is doing business as Red Dory Restaurant. This seems like an affiliated transaction.
They are friends.
Gentlemen, if you just want to introduce your names, connection to Tiverton, please, and...
Kenneth Tremblay, one thirty-nine Beersworth Road, Tiverton, Rhode Island. I represent Red Dory, Mr. Stevenson.
Nice to see Mr. Tremblay.
I'm Ray Holland. My office is at three nine one three, Main Road in Tiverton.
And Ray and I are not friends.
Would you be more comfortable sitting, or is it...
I would, no.
Okay, sorry.
He, he would have a tendency to stay too long if you let him sit. I, I represent the, the transferee, Dory Go. The only stockholder, the only member of the corporation is Aaron Dorigo. Aaron lives in Tiverton, his wife is Amy, his maiden name was Peckham, and they live on Pond Bridge Road and it's the, the feral big Peckham farm family. Mr. Dorigo has been a, the cook, the head chef at the Back Eddie in Westport for many, many years and decided it was basically a time to come home. So, he is no longer there, he's left there and we're hoping to open up right after April first down here. The restaurant is going to be primarily just what it is now, the menu's the same, the seating is the same, we're asking for the license to also include the outdoor, the deck, which they have now according to Nancy, and it's basically the, the same operation. There's nothing that we know that's going to change at this point.
Okay, anything to add to that, or?
No, other than the fact that we're waiting for a certificate of good standing for division of taxation. We filed all the papers, but that usually takes a couple of weeks.
It'd take forever.
So, if we could, if you would, if you see fit to pass, we'd ask to be contingent upon receiving that, of course.
Okay, this is a, a public hearing. Would anybody from the public wish to be heard on this matter? Second call? Okay, the floor is open, any council comments or questions?
I, I would make a motion except that I don't know what the effective date of this is, Madam Clerk. If the, is the transfer from now until the regular November licensing date?
So, it's only till November two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, in, in that case, is the first one the liquor license? In that case, I'd make a motion to transfer the BV liquor license from TRDR, Inc., does business as Red Dory, to Dory Go Incorporated, from now through the expiration of November ni, did you say November nineteenth?
Two thousand and nineteen.
November two thousand and nineteen.
Because we deal with different dates.
Whatever, whatever date our...
Meeting all legal requirements.
Subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Including the tax good standing from the state of Rhode Island.
Second.
Longest state in the country to get a tax good standing.
Oh, it's awful.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. Does anybody wish to speak in opposition? Anyone wish to speak at all? Hearing none, all those in favor? That's...
And then I'd also make a motion...
I might need to call that one, just as a formality, I don't know if I called the vicualling, is that where you're headed?
Yeah.
There's, on the back of this is a certificate of good standing for TRDR.
That's Secretary of State, but not tax, I think is the problem.
Got you, got you, got you.
Tax takes forever in the state, is the issue. I'll just fly through this really quick as a matter of the agenda. Ditto, but for the vicualling license instead of the BV liquor license, does anybody wish to be heard on the vicualling license? Second call?
Is that a public hearing?
Counselor Hilton?
Okay, in that case, I'd make a motion to, for a new vicualling license for Dory Go Incorporated. And that through, and that's November, it's the same date, right? November twenty nineteen? I just couldn't remember when they were all expired. Subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Can you have a motion, a second on the floor? Any, any counselors wish to speak in opposition? Any further comments at all? All those in favor are proven as well. All right, that's enough.
Thank you.
Good luck to your clients.
Congratulations, good luck.
Okay, next we have a, an interview for a planning board appointment for the honor expired, three-year term to expire July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Mr. Raymond Fugere, this is a new request and do we, how many, do we have more than one vacancy, we have a resignation pending as well?
That would have filled the slate, but now we have a resignation.
We would have made it, and that would have been nine on the planning, nine on the planning board? Okay, and then if we, I'm not sure we have a choice, but assuming we accept the resignation, that would, okay.
I don't think we do have a choice.
Mr. Fugere, if you'd like to have a seat? Thank you so much for, for coming. Again, I usually just kick off a very informal conversation by tell us who you are, tell us why you're interested in the position, and then we'll, we'll turn it, it'll be to open floor for any, any questions. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Ray Fugere, I live on Highland Road in Tiverton. I've been a resident in Tiverton, has a business for twenty years and has a resident for ten. I like Tiverton, it's a very pretty town and it has a lot of, a lot of unused potential. It could be, in my mind, it could be much, well, a higher status, I guess I would, you would say, that, that's all I can say. It's, it, it does need a lot of planning for sure and it just, it's a nice place to live. And I think I'm going to be here forever.
Hey, I hope you don't mind, but what business do you own in Tiverton? I, I wasn't aware of that.
Oh, it's not a retail business, it's a manufacturing business.
Oh, all right.
And I'm down on Riverside Drive, down by the Riverside Marine, by the new bridge, and I have a few patents and I manufacture stuff to those patents and I also sell those things to those patents.
Okay.
And it's winter sports related.
Have you ever, have you ever gone to planning board meetings?
Planning board, no.
You've never been to a meeting?
No.
Have you read the comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
Are you familiar with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. I know, I know, I know, it's going to come.
No, it's okay, I mean, that's all right, I'm, I'm just asking, I mean, it's, it's an adopted document, so I just...
No, 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 ask him some tough questions, or I got to come up with some, who's got some tough questions?
He likes trees. So, why are you, so, why are you interested in being in the planning board too?
Well...
Well, I know you said, it could be more than we are, but you do elaborate a little bit.
Well, my feeling is, is towns are very similar to businesses, although they can't really keep the profits. That's the only thing. But it always seems to me that there's a yin and a yang, you know, where everybody wants to, their town services, but nobody's willing to pay for them. And then on the other side, of course, it's the exact opposite, well, we're, we'd love to do that for you, but we just don't have the money. So, and I always feel, now, I, I don't, legislators I'm not that familiar with, so I'm not exactly sure how they think or ever, but I always think that there's two ways as far as doing things that you want to do in a town, there's, it, when you look at the financial side of it, say it's taxes that you either, if you want to lower taxes, let's put it that way, this is a better example, if you want to lower taxes, you either spend less or make more. I know, and, and that's the same in business. And so, I feel that it just seems like in all my years, legislators never work the other side, they never seem to try to make more money, but that's more behind the scenes. You know, the, the general public doesn't see that as much, they just see the other side where, oh, they just don't want to spend any money. And so, there has to be a balance in there somehow that, to get all the services that you want and still be able to afford them, still be able to finance them. And there's lots of ways, you know, there's grants, there's taxes, there's weird things, you know? And I always thought, you know, one of the things that, see, I lived in a small village when I was a kid for a certain part and the, the people in the village tended to do a lot, as a kid, tended to do a lot more than I see citizens doing, unvolunteer work in that village than they do here. And I just thought if there's a way that you can get people involved somehow that would help alleviate some of the town services, because some of the town services, they do very little and they're very expensive, like, well, let's clean the streets, you know, it's just, somebody can, you know, you can sweep in front of your house, you know, and, and those type of things, and I'm not sure that it's easy to do or hard to do.
So...
No, go ahead.
I, I couldn't let the night go by if I didn't put you on the spot. We, we worked on the, served on the elected Charter Review Commission together. And by the way, I know with, with the last planning board applicant, we definitely would encourage you to go to a planning board meeting, or, I don't know that they're videoed, I'm not, they're not, so. But do you want to comment a little bit about the, the tree planting?
Oh, my gosh.
Which we, we, Mr. Fugere probably spent a meeting and a half.
No, it wasn't that long.
So, I'm just curious if you'd like to, because, you know, I, well, to give you credit, I, you know, I, you struck him as a person that was not afraid to put ideas on the table and, and, and watch people debate them, so...
Yeah. Well, according to the town comprehensive plan, one of the things is to preserve the historic character of the town. Now, historic character, well, we haven't been there, you know, a hundred years ago, but we've seen pictures, and when I look at those old pictures, I see mature trees. I don't see mature trees the same way as those pictures when I drive down the street. And it's just my contention, and I just, I, for some reason, I like trees, I don't know why I like trees. And for...
This we know.
For, it's the aesthetic appeal, it's the aesthetic appeal of the trees that add to the value of the town. And that's my take on that, that's my, my angle on that.
So, how do you feel about development?
Development, ah, that's a good one. According to the, no.
No, no, of course referred to comprehensive plan.
Did we let him off too easy on the tree question?
I could go, I could go longer on that one.
You wanted to really make fun of him on the tree, I think.
Well, no, I just, he fought valiantly to make sure that in the capital improvement plan, which was part of the charter, the tree planting was to be...
I'll go to that.
Well, I didn't want to belabor it, I just...
Yeah, so, my, my feeling is with, Tiverton won't have mature trees in fifty years unless we plant them today. Okay? So, and trees aren't necessarily inexpensive. So, my plan would be to go to someplace like the Arbor Day Foundation, the ones that'll give... So my plan would be to go to someplace like the Arbor Day Foundation, the ones that'll give out trees for practically nothing, take a lot that the town owns, have a nursery there, and allow the trees to mature to the planting at street level. And that would take care of a lot, of a lot of the expense. And in the meantime, start a program to educate the towns, the town folks that we're going to have all these trees, would you like a tree in your yard? Or would you like a tree along your street? And you have two or three years to prepare for that sort of thing. It's just a long-range goal and it's a, you know, it, it's not expensive if you have a good organizer. And in 50 years, we may not be here, but in 50 years, the town will look much better. And you can see towns, I worked with a landscape architect for about seven years. And a licensed landscape architect, not a designer. And through that, as you drive through towns, and I drive a lot, as you drive through towns, you can really see the towns where people 50, 100 years ago actually cared about the town. And it shows. And those are the towns that people are, really want to live in. You know, they, it's a pretty town, it's a cute town, it's, it's whatever, however you want to describe it. But everybody likes nice places and trees make nice places.
Want to make sure the tree's got a foliage.
All right, the tree. It's kind of a tough question, but what, but what is your feeling on development here in Tiverton?
Oh, on development, I'm sorry, yes.
The trees was tough too.
Yeah, the trees were tough too. Well, the population isn't really decreasing. Housing is important. And you can't stop progress. All you can do is try to push it in one direction or the other. There's always going to be progress and in the housing market, there's always going to be pressure on the housing. Aesthetics is important. High rises, to me, are fine in the big cities. They're not fine in a little rural community like Tiverton. To address that problem, development, if I was looking at the housing side of it, it would certainly, the architectural, oh, I have to go through this again. You can't legislate.
You're gonna do the trees again?
No, 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 no. You can't legislate taste. Unfortunately, you can't legislate architecture. You can hope to encourage it in one direction or the other. And I would hope to encourage it in a manner that's befitting the rural character of Tiverton. You're not going to stop the dwelling numbers. That's always going to happen. That's always going to happen. But just to get a uniform architectural style would be great. That would really be good.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, thank you very much for.
So, so first of all, thanks for coming tonight. So here would be my request of you, which is that normally, you know, we hear applicants and then we vote at the next meeting. But I would strongly, strongly encourage you to go to a planning board meeting to be sure that this is what you really want to do. And I say that because it's, you know, it, it's a board with a tremendous amount of responsibility. And it, to be a good planning board member, it requires a certain amount of work outside of the meetings. And a lot of the material that planning board members have to make decisions on is, is actually technical, so being in your business, you'll understand that. So it's not as simple as being able to look at something and say, well, I think that fits, I think it's okay. It's complicated, it's technical, and the planning board really needs members who are willing to roll up their sleeves and, and educate themselves on those technical things and, and, you know, go to things like growth smart seminars or seminars that are put on by URI and really, because you're making, you're making permanent decisions for the town, like those people 150 years ago. So I would ask you first, before we vote, that you take the time to go to the next planning board meeting and see what they do and where their authority begins and ends, because that's the other thing I, you know, sometimes people think that they can get on the planning board and, you know.
And run the town.
Well, no, but they don't necessarily understand where the limits of their authority are, and then they get frustrated because they thought they could, you know, change things that they can't. And also maybe to talk to the planning board chair who's sitting over there, Susan Gill, and I, she's happy to talk to anybody about planning. I know she is. And just make sure, before we, you know, consider voting you, that you have a good understanding of what it would, what it would entail, what it takes to be a good planning board member, and make sure you still want to do it. And if on the off chance you decide after learning all that, you're not interested, you do know we have a tree commission, don't you, that's desperate for good people? So if you were to decide, okay, maybe this isn't what I thought it was going to be, or it, it, you know, it's going to be more worker hours, we do have a tree commission that really could use.
You could do both actually, if you want.
Probably could. Anyway, that, that would be my, my request is that we don't consider this until you've seen the planning board and are sure that that's something you're interested in.
Right, I'll do that.
If that's agreeable to you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. And thank you.
Okay, next is item D2. Speaking of the planning board, we have a resignation of a planning board member, Ms. Melissa Hutchinson. I suspect we will have no choice but to accept it, so may we have a motion to accept with gratitude?
I think I may be missing the resignation letter in my packet. I have an email. And there's a reference to a PDF.
So we make it easy to arrive but hard to leave, so.
But it says there's a reference to it, the resignation is a PDF, and I haven't seen that. Not that I'm going to refuse it, but just for.
We really don't want you to leave.
Just for, you know, exit interview type stuff. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, please do.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Melissa Hutchinson as a planning board member with regret and thank her for her service.
All right, we have a motion and a second to regretfully accept the resignation of a planning board member with appreciation and gratitude for her service. All those in favor? Okay, very well. Subject to confirmation that we see her signature on the. Okay, next is sponsored by Council de Maderos, approval of contract amendment from Mr. Town Administrator for a modest salary increase effective March 16.
I would like to table this until after we have the executive.
Do you want to inform a motion or can we deem that administrative?
I think I can do that. Table it until the executive session where we discuss.
Without objective, without objection, sorry, the agenda item will pass into the agenda. No financial business. So, new business, Town Administrator, approval for the unbudgeted purchase of two outboard motors for the Harbor Masters boat proposed to be funded about $12,000 out of the miscellaneous boating supplies account and another $30,000 from the restricted capital reserves. Did you wish to speak further?
I will just quickly summarize what I think I already spoke to during a budget meeting. And by the way, we have the Chair of the Harbor and Coastal Waters Management Committee as well as the Harbor Master here. The issue is that we have a vessel without operable motors and that it's hard for a Harbor Master to do his job under those conditions. We had talked about the need to replace them. It's been debated a couple of times whether we should get used motors instead. And I think they've done their homework, deciding that you're really better off replacing this with two motors. They've also gone around trying to figure out where the best prices can be had, including an attempt to see if that can be done from a local distributor. And the net result of that is that there's a proposal to purchase two Honda outboard motors. And to do that this year, and that's my recommendation, because originally I had planned to include this in the FY '20 capital budget. Until I heard that in fact, we already had one season where he couldn't go underwater and it would be somewhat too bad if we had another season like that. So I then suggested that we find a way to fund this in this fiscal year, but apply the balance that we have in the Harbor Masters boat, boating operational account, I believe, to that. Which then means that we suggest that, that you approve expenditure of $11,875 out of that boating, boating supplies account. And the remainder, which would be $30,000, out of the restricted capital reserve account. And the balance is there to cover this.
Yeah, and what's left in the restricted account, 30s?
Excuse me?
What's left in that restricted capital, is it like 36,000?
I think it's more like 40 something.
Okay, I wasn't, yeah, I remember we discussed it the other night, but I.
Right, yeah.
I don't have it in front of me. Just in my, no.
And I discussed this with the treasurer.
It was over the 30, I remember that, because you had mentioned that you wanted to.
Yes, there, there's more than enough in it nonetheless. It's obviously significant when we deplete an account this much, so we certainly need to think about how we're going to reple, replenish that account.
We did it with a resolution.
But the treasurer liked it because it, you know, the connection is right there. This is the kind of account that was created for this kind of purpose.
I'm sorry, just before we figure out how we might pay for this, did you want to briefly introduce yourself and speak to the need, or is that beyond any, any reasonable dispute?
That is, that is, Bruce Cox, Chairman of the Harbor Commission, actually, it's the Harbor Masters budget and the Harbor Masters boat. But it, it's beyond debate as to whether or not we need engines. Last year, Tyler very intelligently elected not to throw good money after bad. The boat was a donation by the DEM to the town. It's a superb vessel. It requires two boat, two engines to operate it properly. You cannot buy a matched set of engines used without basically buying someone else's problems. We've had this boat about nine years.
Eight years.
Eight years. And by, you know, judicious means he's kept this boat running, the engine's running very well. Problem is, they're aluminum engines, and he can explain it better than I. Aluminum engines, which they all are, in salt water.
Don't hold up in salt water.
And there's no such thing as a steel engine, unless you want to probably spend $100,000 on an engine. Don't happen anymore. But yes, that, this is, and I think the administrators did an excellent job of identifying sources of funds to, to acquire these engines.
Well, that's my issue. I mean, I, I support the purchase, I want to say that out front, and this has kind of gone through my ears as I've had other things in my mind, but I don't see how we have authority to spend that money.
The capital?
The capital. I just don't see it.
What we have in the past?
Well, we may have done that, but if, I'm, I'm looking at the resolutions from the FTR and there's one that says all capital accounts are restricted for their intended purpose and no transfers are authorized. And there's another that puts money into this account, but doesn't authorize any expenditure out of it. I'm just, it might be too technical, but I just, I just don't understand, I don't see how we have have the authority to spend that money outside of an FTR.
Is there another place we could get it?
Well, here's, here's where other theories come into play. I, on the other hand, do not see what prevents us from spending money out of the fund balance.
What fund? No, you can't do that.
Well, I haven't found the law or statute that prevents that under $500,000.
No, you can't do that.
No, over 500,000, but under 500,000 it is not.
Yeah, but the people didn't vote to take it out of the general fund either, so you're looking at the same problem.
Well, no, here we have a resolution that says you cannot spend anything except, in capital, except for its intended purpose. We have no intended purpose with an unrestricted account. I mean, with the, with the money that's in that.
May I?
You can't take it out of the fund.
I may be wrong, because I wasn't here when the account was established. But I think the purpose of establishing that account is to be able to spend on an emergency basis or otherwise for urgent reason, when there are no other funds in the budget available. And I think that's how it has been used, which I can understand. What you're saying, just because you've done it, doesn't mean it was right. But I believe that the account was specifically established for this purpose, and that was certainly what I seemed to understand from the treasurer as well.
And we also got a lawyer's opinion at the time that, that, that we made this account, and we just didn't do it without someone telling us we could and that it was legal, but.
When was it created, this account?
Not last year, the year before, maybe, right?
I thought it was the year before that, but I could be wrong.
Well, yeah, the years kind of blend into each other for me, but maybe, it was at least two years ago. So maybe it was three years ago. And we've taken it out occasionally for capital expense. And what I understood is we, we could do it, but if Giovanni wants to give us an opinion on this, the prior opinion was we could spend it on capital expenses. As far as taking out the fund balance, I would really like a legal opinion on that, because I've been doing this a long, long time. And I've been told you can never take from the general fund without a vote. And I would have a real problem taking from, that, taking from the general fund is much different than taking from a capital reserve to buy capital that the people said we could put in the capital reserve. I would, I don't think you can take it out of the fund balance. So I, I'm going to add a whole nother level of complication here. And by the way, I'm, I'm all for this. That we need to get these engines, this boat needs to be out there. Frankly, we're not supposed to be collecting warren fees if we don't have a boat out there. So there's a real.
We only bring in about $50,000 with those.
Right. So, so, but we're supposed to then, in return for that, be providing this boat. So it's a real emergency.
If I, if I speak to Mr. Katz, it's Counselor Katz's comment, it's, I would interpret what your, your concern is, is, is it's a capital reserve account and you're not supposed to spend the money for other than intended purposes. The intended purpose in this instance would be to buy these specific engines, not to, oh, by the way, also go get a T-top for the boat, also go over here and, you know, educate Tyler at BCC or some other place. It's intended as expressly for capital investments for long-term items that happen to come up on an unexpected basis. Unfortunately, you cannot forecast precisely when, unless you want to make a sinking fund for a budgeted item such as engines or fire trucks, where you have a reserve, you say, on next year, we will buy new, whether we need it or not. Which is sort of a tomfoolery way of doing it. It's not how the town operates. And in this instance, I think that's how that would be interpreted. I'm not trying to step on Mr. Chichioni's role here, but done a little bit of this interpretation.
I agree with, that, that's probably how it should be set up. The, the problem is the way we've done this sort of thing is there's a capital budget at the, I used to be the financial meeting, now it's the FTR, and those are the intended purposes. There's no line item on that capital budget that says general capital needs or anything like that. There's just, that's all that's on that budget. And then another resolution puts money in, creates a fund to put money into it. So it tells where the money's going to come from and it goes into the account, but there's no authorization to spend that. And so what we tend to have done in this town is say, well, we'll create a fund. And on our budget sheets, it shows as a transfer into a fund that comes from somewhere, rather than a restricted account on our audit. But we, nobody has ever created a fund, and there ought to be in a charter, a capital fund, and I think we're heading in that direction. I just, I'm just concerned because we have, to me, this really does look, all municipal capital accounts will be restricted for their intended purpose. And that's as of the vote of the FTR, and I just don't, this was not on the, the account wasn't even on the FTR docket.
Well, yes. Was it a resolution?
That's a, that's the resolution.
Yeah, that's the resolution.
That's the resolution.
I mean, the whole idea, the whole idea, but exactly behind having this account, as Mr. Cox said, is that it, it could be used at the end of the year when we're budgeting, if there's money left over, that it, you know, that it's restricted to capital and it gets put to capital that is included in the FTR. But the whole idea was to have some money set aside for when a, a piece of capital equipment that we hadn't budgeted for breaks or fails or whatever it is in the middle of the year, because it, you know, it's not a, it's not a $3,000 thing that we can get quarters out of the, you know, sofa cushions to pay for. The, the idea was to have.
Often do.
Which, yeah, which, the idea was to have some money in a capital account that, you know, i- if something really big broke or failed, we had a way to replace it. Because we didn't know that it was going to fail, you know, at the prior FTR. That was the idea. I'm going to throw something else into the works tonight, and I feel, and I actually, I feel awful doing this, but I feel like I would be remiss if I didn't in my duty. awful doing this, but I feel like I would be remiss if I didn't in my duty, which is, don't we have to go out to bid for this?
I think we do.
Given the cost? I mean, unless you want to make, and it's up to the town administrator and the town solicitor, you know, if this follows, falls under emergency purchasing, or sole source, or whatever, I know there's some exceptions, but generally, anything at this amount, I mean, it's way beyond the minimum bid amount. We have to go out to bid for it.
Unless it's its own.
Unless, unless you two work out something else.
Well, I certainly have given that some thought myself. This actually started, I think, before, well, the whole discussion about the motors at some point started before I was here, but I also have wondered whether this was subject to competitive bidding, and I believe this is a case where if you shop around, and you compare at least like three bids or something like that, or three quotes from distributors, you can do this. That's my understanding. But, well, you know, okay, I don't know why this comes up now instead of that earlier, but then I don't have an answer.
That's a fair question.
Well, we didn't know, I mean, listen, I'm all for this, but we didn't know this until now, and I'm just
And that is as, at government pricing, that's discounted for government
And you know what, and maybe, they may be on the master price agreement list, I'm just saying that, you know, I think it's like $7,500 is the bid limit, and this is way above that, so
Unless it's an emergency.
Exactly, that, which is not my call, but that's for the town solicitor
Well, it might be our call.
And the town administrator to determine, but I'm just suggesting that you look at the purchasing guidelines and see whether or not, where that falls.
So, the good news is, I think you're hearing support and concept, so consolidate the gains here.
If we can inform the council, it's what has been done. We have, we know, there are two local outboard people in town. One across down the road here on the pond, does not do engine replacement, he puts new engines on new boats. He's not interested in it. The other one, Larry, who's a great guy, client of mine, and has a great little shop up on the pond, over on Stafford Pond, stops at 21 feet. We spoke to him, and he said, 28, I can't even get it down my lane. And I'm not certain that he handles the high-tech, computerized engines that now exist. The pricing that's been obtained is GSA pricing, so you're not going to get a better price. So what you're now looking for is service and availability. 28-foot boat weighing 8,000 pounds?
Roughly 10 to 12.
10 to 12,000 pounds, it's not something you just casually drag around to different places.
Down the lane.
Down the lane, it's down the little Larry's lane, yeah. The other sites that would be potential on this is Maritime Solutions and Tony's Marine, but Tony's Marine doesn't deal with these engines, so you're limited in the facilities available to you. That's the problem. If you try to go greater distance, not going to happen. Stripe Marina is a client of mine over in Warren, and I spoke to him about this, and he said, Bruce, I can't, won't even touch it. It just isn't something he'll do. He makes too much more money dealing with new people, new boats, and, you know, margins.
And this company Maritime, they have been servicing the boat for eight years now.
We used it with the
Since I've been the Harbor Master
The fire
Strictly serviced them.
You're satisfied with the diligence on the quote, is what we're
Oh, absolutely.
I had actually forgotten about the GSA listing there. I do believe that certainly an argument could be made that being GSA pricing is equivalent to being on a master price agreement. And I thought that was sufficient, actually, to move this forward.
So, what would happen if this was carried over to the next year's budget, it was approved at the Financial Town Referendum in May?
Won't be able to buy it till July.
How does that work from a practical sense?
Just delay it even longer, and still no boat.
Your primary times of service are, starting in May 1. You have Memorial Day, and you have 4th of July. Those are the two most, you know, highest demand days of the year. You're going to go blowing right by them. You're going to be in the middle of August for all practical purposes.
So you can, once you know you have a funding in, say, mid-May, I don't know the date, 20th or something, post-July 4th till it's installed?
Yes, right. So, I mean, that's the problem, and Maritime Solutions is not going to order these and keep them on the shelf. It doesn't happen that way. You give them the money, they get you the engines, but they don't have them on these things. It's not, it's not like a car dealership, these are big dollars.
Do we have any, desperately, we've got a council that supports the concept, and now I'm trying to navigate.
I personally think we could take it from capital.
Is there any other funding without touching the capital reserve? There's no other funding?
Oh, the contingency fund, but I don't
Not enough in it.
The contingency, there was about 25 left?
The council contingency.
I know, that was meant to be used for something else.
Okay, so, it looks like if we're going to press the matter, we need to make a, we need to make a decision on whether the capital reserve is available, or whether we might subscribe to Mr. Katz's theory, which, let's not talk about that just yet. Where are we on the capital reserve? How tight is that resolution?
I just want to respond, because I didn't get to Council Hilton's concept of the capital account. That's a great idea, I just don't see that authorized anywhere. We can all say this count, it will be used for this, but it's not in resolutions, it's not in a charter. I just don't see where that comes from, apart from a decent idea that never became actual law anywhere, and that's my concern here.
But can I square the circle? Is it part of what was rolled over from a prior year, which was more general in rollover nature? And I'm not trying to be cute, but
No, no, we just started this account, but that's what it was for.
Well, this would be, this would be the money that, once all provisions of the charter are met, shall transfer out of unexpected expenses. 25% goes to draining, 25% to the restricted capital expenditure account, which was created for this, under this resolution, but there's no, there's nothing that tells you how you can spend it.
On capital, though, unrestricted capital.
But every other capital item has a specific thing the voters vote on.
But that's why we put that, and I guess you had to be there for the discussion, that was what Trish said. It is a reserve account that, in an emergency, we spend on capital. We cannot spend it on
That should have been in the
So, so
Okay, so it wasn't in the
So we don't have
So where we might all agree
But even if it's not completely in the resolve, I mean, you can look at the historical, the historical use of it, you can go back to the minutes and listen to the discussion when it was created. I mean, that's what it, that
And we've taken from it before without anyone
Okay, so to try to frame the debate, and I'll turn it over to you, is, so, we don't dispute that the regular FTR resolve, which restricts for the stated purpose, probably means what it says, but here we're talking about the, sort of the carryforward or the rollover. The suggestion is that the resolution on the rollover enlarges it to a more general purpose. In fact, it doesn't, it doesn't specify a particular purpose, that's the, and then the question, if we agree on that, the question is, just because you've authorized pouring the money into the bucket, did that also include the authority to take it out of the bucket? Did I frame the debate fairly? Did I confuse everybody?
No, no, I understand that question. I'm not sure if Mr. Katz agrees that that is the question.
Well, I agree that that's the question, I just, I don't think the answer is obviously yes. I mean, when the voters approved this, they had no way of knowing how much money would be going into this account. So say it was a million dollars, and then the council said, oh, we've got a million dollars, and in our restricted capital account, let's buy, I don't know, a helicopter, I don't know how much it costs, but, you know, and
So you're concerned that the discretion is somewhat open-ended, that the voters may not have approved some dollar amount? You know, a voter may have said, well, you know what, give the council 50 grand in discretion, because that's what we think will end up in this account.
No, I think we explained that well when we explained the resolution.
If I just ask the question, I want to make sure I understand. Is, is that the concern, that it's too open-ended, or is it even as dollar one? I mean, I guess
I, I think, to get to that, I have to say, I'm reading it in combination with the separate resolve that says all municipal capital accounts will be restricted for the intended purpose. So that one says an intended purpose, it's laid out on the docket, this dollar amount for that, and there's no, nothing on the docket that says this presumable amount for, you know, annual, whatever comes up.
So, I, I mean, I, this is the first I've thought of this, so I ask you to forgive me as I, as I sort of try to think this throughout loud, to some extent. But I understand that concern, I think that the council could essentially, and I don't mean you have to do this formally, but each of you individually, could essentially make two findings that help you get through that question. The first finding is, and this is a general rule of legislative interpretation, you are allowed to presume that legislation, in this case, that resolution, has a meaning that makes sense, right? And I understand that it may lack clarity, but if you were to interpret it as not being authorized to buy a boat engine, for example, then what, for what purpose does it exist? So, if the voters put that there for some, for good reason, right? You have to sort of give the electors, the voters, the members of the financial town meeting the benefit of the doubt, or you can give them the benefit of the doubt there, that they, they understood it to be money that you can spend, in some fashion. And then, I think, secondly, if you can get over that hurdle, I think you then have to say, and, did they understand it to be an account and a discretionary account, which is what you would get to, of a scale that this expenditure, coupled with all the prior expenditures from this account, would have been deemed reasonable and fair to the voters, fair to the taxpayers, and within the authority that they would reasonably expect it to have granted you, as the council. I think if you can get over those hurdles, then, you know, again, I lack a lot of context here, so this is very theoretical, but, you know, without having that resolution in front of me, and without having the history and the, you know, the minutes and the charter, you know, the charter components that this was all done under, and, you know, it would take some reading to get there, but if, my understanding of what these resolutions represent is correct, then I, I think it comes down to, I can't imagine that the money was put there for no purpose.
Well, it could be to save it up, to apply to capital the following year, it could just be a statement, you're underfunding your capital, here's, here's some money to roll over, and next year put something before us that would spend this.
Rob, to speed this along, could I make a motion? And then we could have discussion after that?
Sure, well, I think maybe Trish has the next mic, and then
So, I do think that there's, there's a history behind this that is eminently viewable, and I do think there are the minutes from the discussion, which, you know, when the idea of this capital reserve was created, and how money's been spent out of it, although at the end of the year, it, you know, it does often roll into the capital account for the FTR.
No, 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 it stays in that restricted account, it just adds up.
It just adds up.
It never rolls, it just, that is, that stays there.
But, but I also think that if we are going to do something with this, I do think, even if there is an appropriate way to, you know, whether or not this falls under a master price agreements because of the GSA pricing or whatever it is, in order to vote on that, we need the documentation for that. We need the actual, we need the actual reasoning. If we're not going out to bid, we need a document that says why we don't have to go out to bid in order to vote on this.
Yeah, I, well, I don't necessarily agree that you need a document to do that, but I certainly would not, I certainly would not vote on this without having that resolution include some direction as to confirming that it is either
Right.
Subject to sole source, or GSA, or whatever that is.
Yeah, whatever the criteria is, there needs to be something that has that in writing.
Yeah, and if, and if not, then it either has to go, I don't know if the Harbor Commission or the town would issue the bid, but I'm not sure that that would, the timing may be problematic. If it is, then they can come back, and I don't
Maybe then it's an emergency.
This may be an emergency, given the timing that they've expressed, if you take that on face value, and the fact that you're going to be potentially risking not only the mooring fees that you would collect over the entire course of the summer, but the purpose of having the boat there is for protection of life and limb, and that's what a Harbor Commission does. I know it's not, it's not an emergency that's facing an issue tomorrow, because the boaters aren't all in the water tomorrow, but, but if you don't do it now, then you may have a harbor master who can't get to people in the water, which is certainly problematic.
Right.
So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think you would have a problem if you all agreed that this was an emergency to go under whatever emergency procurement rules are applicable.
So, anyway, my point on that was that possibly what we should do is put this back on our agenda for the 25th.
So how long does it take to post a bid? I should probably know that, but if we wanted to foreclose any doubt on that, what's the turnaround?
For how many weeks, Nancy?
30 days, or something like that?
Oh, that gets
Two weeks.
We didn't go out to bid on, what are the reasons not being able to go out to bid? Like the benches
Sole source.
If it's a sole source, in other words, you can only get it, there's only one place that makes that thing, then it is there, you can, you don't have, so if it's a sole source provider, if it's an emergency, if they are on a master price agreement list that is either the state's or a regional, regional master price list, I don't know if the national one counts, but the regional one counts.
I don't know that answer.
So there's a, there's, I don't know, there's five or six reasons in the state laws that allow you not to go out to bid on something.
Or a small dollar amount, which is one
Right.
As a practical matter, we know that the team did diligence, I don't know whether it checks all those boxes from a legal point of view.
I don't, I don't think that helps.
Now, is it correct that the fire department vote was a GSA price motor?
No, 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 the fire department vote was given to the town
But they went through multiple motors.
I'm not sure.
They've gone through two years.
Yeah, I'm not sure how they got it, I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, the good news is, I think this is going to happen. We're not sure when or how, but, okay, so, I guess someone like me's got to figure out what to do here.
Well, if it's, if it's a short-term thing, then maybe what we should do is ask the solicitor and the town administrator to get an answer as soon as humanly possible as to whether or not we need to go out to bid, and if we do, then to direct the town clerk, because you could put it out for two weeks, to get the ad in the paper is, you know, in other words, give her permission to go ahead and go out to bid even before our next council meeting, if they determine that's what needs to happen, and then at least it gets, it gets the bid document out there, and
I would recommend, Mr. President, if you were to vote to approve it tonight, subject to it going to bid, and secondly, subject to resolution of the funding issue, which will be brought up at the next meeting, so that, you know, you can go out to bid without having the money in place, that's, that's fine.
Well, I was going to
I'm more worried about the money.
I was going to make a motion to take from the capital, but
I'm more worried about the
The bid.
The funding.
Well, I can't imagine that waiting two weeks to go to the next meeting is going to speed up the process any faster than putting it out to bid.
No, I just mean answering Mr. Katz's concerns on the capital reserve, I think is, we need to spend some time with that, too.
Right, right, but they, but they can go out to bid without that having been resolved.
Agreed.
And at least the bid process, you know that is an effective process, right? You, you know that is a solution that's allowed.
But if there's any of us, and maybe I'm in the minority, that want to resolve this tonight, it sounds like for varying reasons, there doesn't look like I see four votes here to resolve this tonight, so the prudent thing to do would be to go to bid, for sure, and then
I would think from Mr. Cox's perspective, that's as fast as any solution.
It costs money to go to bid, because you got to pay for the advertising, so that's why I'm saying, if you, if you
Couple hundred bucks, right?
Well, but still, but if you, and it's the whole, then you got to go to bid, and that's a more time-consuming process, so
We might get a lower bid, too.
Can we waive the bid? Well, we have to find out if it meets any of the criteria.
And if it doesn't, then we don't have to go to bid. That's why I'm saying, my suggestion would be to direct the town administrator and Mr. Chichioni to figure out if we have to go to bid, and if we do, if they don't, they don't have to do anything, we'll just put it on the next agenda, but if they do, they can direct the town clerk to get the bid out like tomorrow, like, you know, get it out the door as fast as she can with a two-week deadline.
Why don't we just go to bid, and then we could put the brain trust on for two weeks on how to pay for it?
I
And maybe we can get people comfortable with the
I think Commissioner, oh, Commissioner, Councilor Hilton probably has a fair point there, that if you give Yon and I 48 hours to make a determination as to whether this comes under GSA or, you know, pre-approved master list pricing, we may just find that first thing in the morning and be able to solve this and avoid the bid. You could certainly authorize one, and then if not You could certainly authorize one, and then if not one, then the other. We can get the bid processed promptly.
Does anybody from the public wish to be heard on this? Particularly if we might possibly choose not to go to bid on this? Second call? Okay, there's no feedback from the public, so that sounds like a working consensus. So I'm seeing sort of a multipart, if-then type of waterfall here. Step one is, the town administrator and the town solicitor will make a, I guess if you don't agree, then you'll do nothing. If you both agree, if you're both satisfied that we can proceed without bid, then we won't go to bid, and we've delegated that decision to your consensus. If either of you feel we need to go to bid, then post the bid. Meanwhile, we need to resolve the funding question, which will be determined at another date. Is that a fair, workable solution? And we'll bring this back up on March 25th, at least for a statute report. I don't know if that's enough airtime for the bid if we do go to bid.
If we don't have to go for bid, we can vote on it the 25th, and if not...
But either way, we can spend some time talking about the funding mechanism and see if there's a way to satisfy Mr. Katz's concerns, which I think is a valid concern. It's certainly in the gray, and I can tell you this, because I know from the Charter Review Commission, we spent a lot of time on trying to resolve this very ambiguity. So off the cuff, without re-studying it, I think it is ambiguous, which is why we spent so much time on it, so, which means there's probably room for good-faith discussion either way, which might get us through the hurdle, or maybe not. You're not going to be satisfied with this at all.
Mr. President, may I ask a simple question?
Sir.
What is the definition of the word "reserve"?
I think that...
Is the capital reserve available for this council to spend in surprise?
That's exactly the question. The question is, did the resolve imply restricting it? So one could imagine, for example, what if there was $450,000 in a restricted account for paving, and the council said to the town administrator, don't spend a penny of it, and 100% of it carried into the next year, then could we spend that on something entirely different? It's a little bit...
No, that was an identified issue. This is an open general reserve, capital reserve.
But it's funded from the carryforwards, right? Is that the issue?
Right.
So if we didn't spend, say, my hypothetical, the paving money, and it spilled into the next year, does that then free it up to become discretionary? My off-the-cuff view is that this amount is nominal enough, that it's not an affront to the voters, but you could see, at least hypothetically, how you wouldn't want to allow work around the voters restricting it in the first place. So I don't know if we need to strictly read it such that the carryforward, the restriction applies to the carryforward. I just, that's the issue, I think.
There's an account.
The other half is that none of this conversation applies to the fund balance.
Which I disagree with.
There's no legislation anywhere saying that we can't spend the fund balance under $500,000.
Well, we're doing it anyway.
What I'm saying is, I don't like it. I think the system needs to be fixed, and I think the Charter Review Commission tried to fix it, but there's nothing in the charter that says that the fund balance can't be spent. In fact, the implication...
It's the whole FTR, which gives a certain appropriation, and that's it.
But it also appropriates to line items, and the town council always has taken the authority to...
Well, just to jump in, that actually, I think, for those of us that would respectfully disagree with Justin, is the fact that the charter contemplates transfers from one account to another, I feel like that goes against the concept that we could go into the general fund. If we could just always dip in the general fund, why would we ever need to do transfers?
Absolutely.
I'm not sure the charter contemplates transfers.
Oh, it does, because it's unanticipated needs and shortfalls, and it went to the municipal court, and the municipal judge, which I disagree with, said that the word anticipated applied to the word needs and shortfalls. So it's, that one, believe me, we're not a town that there will be a complaint filed no matter what we do, and I'd rather take my chances on the capital reserve.
I don't take it from the capital reserve. What I've seen in the past, we've taken from the capital reserve, and I think the people who voted for that assumed that this is what it was for, because of the discussion that led up to doing it.
The precise question is, does the carryforward free it from the original restriction?
No, it's not carried over from the capital. It's carried over from the general budget and put into a restricted capital account. But I mean, as a point of fact, I voted for this, and my thinking was, we need more funding for capital, this will work next year, we put it on the FTR. I didn't think...
Well, some of these budgets are your petitions, probably, so you can tell us better than others. Actually, well, you raised a really good point, and then I'll...
Why would we have a capital reserve, why would we create this account if you couldn't access it? If you couldn't take from it?
Well, I just explained, because you want more capital, and then the voters can vote on it next year.
But we might have just solved this problem, well, I mean, so if what I heard correctly, Justin, is that the capital reserve in this context is funded from an operating carryforward, then doesn't that have to mean that the capital reserve is general and broad?
Yes, because that's where it comes from. It comes from, it's the general, if there's anything left in revenues at the end of the year, it gets split up, and some goes into the restricted paving account, right, which they can use for paving, like, even if it's, you know, they can...
It doesn't have to be voted on.
It doesn't. It can be used for paving, and some goes into this restricted capital account, which the whole purpose of having that is, again, if something big, expensive, that qualifies as capital, an unanticipated piece of capital fails or breaks, we have a way to replace it, even, you know, during the year.
So that we don't have to wait a whole year.
Yeah.
Okay, here's the plan. I think we get the issues. You have some work to do, right? No?
Could I make a suggestion? I mean, I'm only one person here, so if somebody wanted to move this, I would vote against it on procedural grounds, but I'm for the expedience for actually getting this done.
Like, could I make a motion to move forward, take from the capital, as long as we make sure that it isn't something we have to go out for bid for, and then if we do, to immediately go out for bid, and we'll discuss it the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
But I think we need some backup legally on this, and I don't know that you're prepared to do that on spot.
Backup for what?
So there will be a second vote before a final authority on this, or...
No, I'm gonna make, well, I can make a motion.
Well, you can, and you get my support, but I do want to see, you know, there's a good-faith disagreement here, and I think this is why we pay our solicitor the big bucks to tell us if we're within the realm of good-faith ambiguity here.
I think the opinion he just gave, unless I interpreted it wrong, was that we could do this. Like, look at those two questions, think of how we feel, and go with that.
What I suggested was a theory under which you could proceed, although I don't want to, you know...
Right, but...
With the caveat that I have not looked at any of this history.
But if the majority feels that your theory works, then we want to move this forward.
I think the only, you know, risk you run is that somebody files a complaint and objects, and, you know, then you have to deal with it on that level.
On a positive note, though, we currently don't have a functional complaint system, so...
Well, that's absolutely true.
Yeah, so it's fine.
That's not the standard we choose.
All right, so I would like to make a motion...
But, so, I'm sorry, we can't, we don't want to give the solicitor time to give us your kind of opinion?
All right, I can make a motion, and we can vote for it or against it, and at least we know what's going on. I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of two outboard motors for the harbor master's boat to be funded as follows. $11,875 out of FY19 account number 3366690, miscellaneous boating supplies, and B, $30,000 out of the restricted capital account number 09809999, with the caveat that if we have to go out for bid, we will go out for bid as soon as we get the answer to that and move forward from there, because we're going to have to go out for bid, and it'll have to come to the March 26th meeting. Is that all right with you?
I understand that, and that is all right with me, and I don't mean to complicate this any more than it already is, but you could also address the concerns of Councilor Katz by adding to that motion a request that the administrator not sign a purchase order until at least the day after the next council meeting.
Okay.
That's all I'm asking.
Okay, I agree with that.
May I, is there a second to that motion?
So...
I'll second.
We have a second, we have a live motion on the floor. The motion on the floor is to approve the funding as requested, but subject to the possibility of going out to bid if so determined by either the town administrator or the town solicitor, and in no event will a binding commitment be signed until at least the day after the next town council meeting.
Yep.
Did I hear this?
Is this a little bit of discussion?
All you want.
Could that also include, is the understanding that it won't be signed until after the next, that if during that time also new information comes, that that is not the meaning of this, that we move forward?
Yeah, presumably we could put it on an agenda and cancel the...
No, that's, I won't amend my motion.
I don't think you have to amend anything for that. I think my intent was to do some research, and on the solicitor's agenda at the next meeting, have a discussion, at which point you all can take my advice or not, and consider, you know, consider how you proceed, but that would be separate from this.
Just as long as we could, we have that opportunity to...
It's at your discretion.
To be super precise, the burden is on somebody to bring a motion to overrule this motion if it were to pass.
You know, and I think it's going to come down to how we interpret it personally, because I think you can read this the way Justin is reading it, or the way that we're reading it, who were there when this came about, so...
I'm sorry.
Well, you weren't at the meeting, you were not part of the town council that made this account.
That's why I'm suspicious.
Oh, Justin, we've been getting along pretty good tonight, so...
That's why I felt for you joking.
Okay, all right.
Well, I will say, and Donna was my vice chair of the Charter Review Commission, we spent a lot of time on, well, many things, but this particular issue is one we wrestled with, so this isn't the first time that it's, we know it's gray, so... All right, is there any further discussion on this motion? Okay, last call for anyone from the public to be heard on this. Okay, all those in favor of the motion as presented? Any opposed? I have 4-2, 4-2 with Mr. Perry absent. Thank you, more to follow? Okay?
At least it ended with this.
Thank you.
I may go back through the minutes.
All right, we are... Chief Jones requests permission to apply for a grant to support and fund the creation of K-9 unit for the police department. We are all about grants, so I guess you're wondering if there's contributed labor from the town, or is this just a general check-in, or, why don't I let you speak to it?
Sure, thank you, good evening. So I've been speaking with, and I have to give the credit to one of our detectives who's been researching this grant, and what we try and do for any projects or initiative in the police department is seek alternative forms of funding. So this grant is through the Stanton Foundation, which is after, I believe, Robert Stanton, who was a former CBS executive. So it actually supports, believe it or not, First Amendment rights, nuclear security, and K-9 units for police departments, I know. So this grant is for three years, $25,000. It would fully support the funding of the program to include the purchase of the K-9, which through the efforts of the detective, he already has donated from a local law enforcement K-9 unit, so that cost is actually deferred. So actually, we already have a dog if we wanted one. The grant would also support the building of a shelter, because the K-9 officer would have the shelter on his premises, because the dog would be his. The outfitting of the vehicle, it would also support that the K-9 officer would have to be trained approximately 12 to 14 weeks. So the grant would support the backfilling of overtime if created by the absence of the officer, up to $25,000, or $1,000 a week, actually. So the grant would be good for three years. So what I'm asking for permission, and how the grant would work, is that there is a grant application, myself and the town administrator, as the chief executive officer would sign off on it, it would go through a screening process. This grant is only available for police departments in Rhode Island, New Hampshire, and Massachusetts. Once approved, we'd get the funding, and then we'd have up to six months to spend the money under the certain parameters of the grant.
Rob, may I? Well, I think, yes, the grant is good, but I think it's policy, we have to pay attention to this. Do we want a K-9 unit? Because we don't have that in our policy now, to have a K-9 unit. So grants are good, but we have to make sure we want this. Second of all, who pays for the...
Who doesn't want a dog?
Well, yeah, but this is my worry. Who pays for the food?
The grants.
And all the shots, all the medical.
Yes.
But after three years, it's the town's responsibility.
Correct.
So after three years...
Or through, I'm sure...
The life of the dog.
Or through other alternative sources of funding and grants.
Right, right.
And I'm sure that if I really tried, I could get people to pay for the dog shots over my shots in the town of Tiverton, for sure.
Explain to me why we need the K-9 unit, like, the reason for this.
So how it would work with the K-9 unit, and there's a myriad of reasons why, clearly there, you currently have a three-officer minimum on the shift. The dog would add force strength to the police department on a normal shift.
So for eight hours, it would work?
Correct. We would alternate the schedule of the K-9 officer, so he's not always working the same shift. We have a large number of woods in the town of Tiverton, so this dog is not just going to be the quintessential, like, narcotics dog, like you see on television. What we want to do, or what my focus would be, is to make it a patrol-function dog, so it can assist the officer, also a search and rescue dog. So last year, we had six incidents of people who got lost in Whiteman Woods, who got lost with elderly folks that had wandered off. The dog was essential, because we had ended up calling for assistance from other departments, state police, to have a dog come in. This also utilizes when we have the INEs and break-ins. So we have, unfortunately, a numerous amount of break-ins, especially vehicle break-ins, the K-9 officer would be able to assist in tracking these suspects down.
Now, this is a funny question. Would the dog be on call 24 hours? So suppose, and the police officer would have to be there with the dog.
Correct.
So would this be any overtime during that?
Correct.
There would be overtime.
There would be, no different.
So in the middle of the night, if we've lost someone in the woods, and we bring in the police officer and the dog, that would create overtime.
Correct. So the supervisor would have to make a decision.
Yeah, for both, no, no.
Right, right, right. The dog will get a treat or something. The, how it would work is the supervisor, and when we implement policy, and there are already pretty much boilerplate policies that we would use through the trust and through the state accreditation that we would copy here, the supervisor would make a decision, like we do, we call detectives.
Right.
Anyone else, accident investigators, there'd be a list, a checklist, that the supervisor would have to meet before the dog's just getting called out, because the dog is not a replacement to the police officer, in addition to.
On that object, I just want...
Of course.
People to realize if all of a sudden it comes out in the budget, well, the dog went out for three days, and it cost this much overtime.
Of course.
I just wanted to address that it would be overtime if this did occur.
Yes, ma'am.
Does it help, I'm just curious, I know we're trying for accreditation, would this be a part of the equation?
The policies would fall under accreditation, so this is kind of an addition to, but, for example, there are departments, to include state police, who have K-9 units, so it doesn't help out with accreditation, it would just fall under an addition to. So we'd have to make sure that as we move through the accreditation process, our policies are, mirror those that are recognized by accreditation.
That comes to my next question. How many police departments in the area have K-9 units? Dartmouth does?
Dartmouth, the Bristol House of Corrections does. We try, we're limited because of jurisdictional issues when we utilize it. I mean, we have mutual aid compacts.
Yeah.
But if it's a search and rescue, obviously, that's a different issue, but if it's anything related to a law enforcement, we have to be more cautious. I tend to move towards state police, because they're Rhode Island-recognized law enforcement.
I was just curious, if other towns around are utilizing K-9?
Providence and Pawtucket were the only ones.
Yes.
So when you said you moved to, you've used outside K-9s?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Right, when available.
Search and...
But we're beholden on them.
I understand that.
And then so that kind of limits...
And there was a time lag and stuff, so...
Yes.
But I was wondering how often you actually, you have used a dog?
The last time that we used a dog, it was, I believe, it was several months ago for a missing person. So, but what we try and do is because we'll call that agency to see if the dog is available. Hopefully, if the K-9 officer is working, it expedites things, but if it's not, then it's a question whether they're going to call back. So by us having the K-9 unit on staff, clearly, it saves time and energy.
So if we have a dog, do we need to increase our liability insurance?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. So we don't know, do we know how much it would cost?
I don't. I'd have to find out.
In extra insurance? Okay.
Why does that get increased?
Because the dog bites.
Dog bite. So if the dog bites somebody, we're.
We hope the dog won't bite, but good.
Right. And actually, statistically, in the studies, it actually helps, because it actually lessens use of force, because people are afraid of the dog. So instead of a police officer resorting to force, either non-lethal or lethal, the presence of the dog actually assists in those difficult situations.
This sounds like, so do they train the dog to bite?
Yes.
Yeah.
And not bite, obviously.
Okay, all right.
Oh, yeah.
So, so we might need some more liability insurance?
Correct.
Okay. And then, I, I know you said it would pay for the dog's routine vet care?
Yes.
But what about medical insurance for the dog?
That is part of the grant as well, if, but if we wanted to research it, depending on if the dog got injured and depending on.
Well, yeah, I mean, like a torn ACL surgery and a dog isn't cheap. Ask me how I know this.
Correct.
I also know this.
So, I mean, you know, if you have a dog that you've invested all this money in, and, you know, it has an injury that requires a significant surgery or something else, not
Even if it gets shot?
You know, I mean, you, it, routine medical care is one thing, but, you know, it can get pretty expensive. So would it, would it be smart to have actually veterinary medical insurance for this? Because otherwise, you might have a $4,000, you know, vet bill. So that's another thing I might like to know at some point. Where would the officer, or is there a restriction on where the officer who has the dog, because it's going to live at that officer's home, lives in relationship to the town of Tiverton?
So as per the grant requirements, I have to interview candidates, and they have to be interviewed by a certified canine officer already, who's been supported by the foundation. So I have to reach out to either state police or Cranston, Providence, a canine officer, and that person would vet interested candidates within the department. But part of any interested candidates would be being within a certain proximity of the town.
So what's a reasonable, I mean, because it wouldn't help to have the dog with its handler if it was an officer that lived in, say, Westerly?
Right.
Right? I mean, so.
I would say Swansea, Somerset, Dartmouth, Westport, Tiverton, Little Compton, obviously, going up Portsmouth, Middletown. But I'd want to put, if they can't get here in 20 minutes or 20 miles, that would be the restriction.
Okay. And then, so you have a requirement to keep this program for three years. Is there any requirement, if for some reason it didn't work, at the end of the grant period, if the town decides not to continue with the dog? Do we have to pay back the grant? Are we required to keep the dog longer? Like, what's the?
We just have to give the dog back.
What's the exit strategy?
We have to give the dog back.
We have to give the dog back.
Okay. But there's no cash payback, or no?
Correct. Correct. Once the expenses are paid, that's it, as long as we keep the program. But if at the end, something happens to the handler, or, or the, or the, becomes disinterested, which I would want to put in some restrictions for the handler as well, to say, you have this dog, it is yours.
It's a big.
It's an investment, absolutely.
I mean.
It's a big responsibility.
It is.
Yeah, it, it's.
I want to be here in front of you asking for this if I haven't already spoken to my people and my command staff, because we want to support this.
And then, in terms of the dog training, it sounds like you want a dog that can do a lot of things, right?
Yes.
So there's the, you know, apprehension training, right? That's when they can run down a sub, and that's when they are trained to actually bite a sub, a potential criminal if they need to. So there's that training.
Correct.
And then there's, and then are you thinking about drugs too, so they'd have to be trained for?
Narcotics.
Narcotic detection?
Yes.
Which is another kind of training.
Correct.
And then, you know, to be able to do sort of the lost and found thing, that's another kind of training, yes.
Correct. So the basic patrol dog functions and missing persons actually come one together. So that's part of like the basic academy for the dog. Narcotics is definitely a specialization. Cadaver sniffing, specialization. Explosives, specialization. At this point, I just want to get the dog trained, basic patrol dog, let it come back to the agency for a while, see how this incorporates into the, the town and the department. And then, when that specialized school comes up in the future, then we could look at it then.
Okay. And how long does it take for a dog to get through basic patrol school?
12 to 14 weeks.
12 to 14 weeks. And, and my last question is, are there resources, you know, in Massachusetts, for example, there are kind of regional resources for canine units, where you've got really seasoned guys who have been doing canines for years, who, you know, can help the newer guys, and there's this network, there's support network from everything, like what do you do, like when you bring your dog home and it barks at your kids, and like all that stuff? Is there anything like that in Rhode Island?
The ACI. So the detective who's been involved with this, the ACI has a cadre of dogs, and they've already offered their assistance for exactly what you're saying, for free.
Okay.
So just the application, so we'll sign off on the grant before we bind the town?
Correct.
May I have a motion to approve? No?
I just wanted to know. Well, I wanted to know two things. I mean, I like the idea, but I'm.
Of course, sir.
Reluctant. According to, you said it's the Stanton Foundation's canine program. According to their guidelines, they pay for the first three, three years, but you have to commit to a five-year minimum use of the.
That's correct.
Animal. So there's two years where, by taking this grant, we'd be committing to pay for on a town.
So we have to keep it for two years after the grant?
We have to, correct. So it's five, it's five years. It's three years they pay for, but there's a five-year commitment.
We have to pay for it for two whole years.
Correct.
And the other, the only, the only units in Rhode Island I can find are state police, Pawtucket, which is new, and Providence. So we'd be really groundbreaking with this expense, it seems to me, for a town of Tiverton size in Rhode Island.
I also believe, and I'd have to double check, either Newport or Middletown might have a canine unit as well. Or did. And with the plan and just looking forward, the projected cost of the canine, once it's established, because it goes down on a sliding scale, also, if you look at the projected cost on the stat and site, it's approximately in year four, $6,000. So it's the initial outfitting of the car, the purchasing of the dog, maintaining of the training. So once you get down to like year four, it's a fraction of the cost of hiring a police officer, obviously. But through, and I would, obviously, all but looking forward, looking for alternative grant funding sources to fund the, that year, year four and going forward. But the, the price is smaller.
Oh, so what if, you're, you're committing to maintaining the canine unit for a minimum of five years?
Yes.
If in year three, you're, the animal should die for some reason, seems to me you're committed to.
Well, I would, I would want to say, and that I'd have to research with the grant. But if something unforeseen happens to the animal, I don't think that we'd be beholden to that. If there's an injury, if in the line of duty, something happens to the animal, I think that would be a different situation. But let's say the example of, the handler just says, I'm all set. There is a provision in the grant that they get first choice at getting the dog back, but there is no payback of the training of the dog. So they could retrain the dog and give it to another agency in another department. What I would prefer to do, which I don't anticipate doing, is if that were to happen, I'd want to keep the dog and get another handler. But I don't foresee that happening, because from the officers that I spoke with, they're committed. They understand what the commitment is, they're pet owners, they, they know the importance of this. They've done a lot of research. A lot of what I'm telling you here today is actually their words. So they know what, what the commitment is to the police department, and also on their lives.
I'll give you an easy one.
Sure.
The, the police officer's bill of rice does not apply to the animal, as I.
Um, no, it doesn't.
Yes, it does, Jeff.
I never know in Rhode.
So, well, for me, before I voted.
Yes, ma'am.
I would, I would like to know about what the extra insurance, what our, what our liability insurance might be, because I have no idea how much that is. It could be like nothing. It could be $175, or it could be like you have a, you know, trained police dog. I, I would like to know that. And, and I really would like to know about the insurance. But I would also like to actually see the grant language and, and have the town, the grant language to really understand what happens at the end of the three years, and whether or not, you know, if we truly couldn't do this, do they just say, okay, then we're going to take the dog back, and we're not going to charge you two years' worth of this? Or is it, well, you got to keep the dog for two more years, and after that, if you don't want to keep it, you could get, I'd like to know all that before I vote. That's just me.
So could we table it until the next meeting and get all that information, Rob?
So you want to make a motion that this be tabled for now, till we get the information that Tricia asked for, until the, is it March 25th? Put it on that agenda?
Do we need a motion, or can we just, I don't know, do we need a motion to do that?
I'm just speaking for myself. It has his recommendation of the police chief of the town administrator, and they're willing to bear the risk that we might not finally approve it. I'm comfortable with the.
Oh, so just, just apply, but, but don't support right now.
If you think it just takes two weeks and you're not under time.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, so everyone can be comfortable. I can, I actually have the grant agreement from the site. I can supply that to the administrator tonight. I will check with the trust and see if there's any liability that imposes, which I'm sure there is, and I can get an exact number. I'll also research, I'll have the officer research for the, with the Stanton Foundation, and also the ACI and other resources. What do they use, and how much would it cost? So we can have everything, so it's transparent and clear.
That might be something to invest in if we go for this.
Absolutely.
Good. Okay. Can sense this decision?
Yeah.
To go on the agenda on the 25th. Thanks for driving us.
But meanwhile, you can apply. Is that what we're saying?
No, we're not going to apply right now.
No, I will, I'll wait. I think we'll all defer to wait. Yes, sir.
Right. Well, that's it. It's probably all ready to go right now.
I just, I just want to say on record about applying for grants with, that the council hasn't for sure approved. Not that I have a ton of experience, but I have a little. And a lot of times, you get one bite at the apple. So if you send in a grant application, and then you, it doesn't get approval, the next time you go to apply from that same place, they're not going to, you know, so in general, I just think you shouldn't go for it until you're sure.
Yeah, refusing a grant, we've been advised in the past, is not very a good, a good idea.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, we're right back to you on permission to advertise to establish eligibility list for police officers. Can you give us a little more context, please?
So this is not a hiring at this point. This is just to, what we normally do is to, just to establish a list. As you're probably aware, we're beholden to the academy, the Rhode Island Municipal Police Academy schedule. They run two academies a year, which causes logistical nightmares for us. But the next academy is in July. There's no way we're going to make that with the academy deadlines and just going through the process. So this would be to establish a list for the potential hiring of a probationary police officer, potentially more, in the January 2020 class. So at this time, it is just the permission to advertise.
That's the support of the town administrator?
Yes. Yep, I'd like to make a motion to advertise to establish eligibility list for the police officers.
Any further discussion?
Okay, all those in favor?
Some are easier than others.
Thank you very much, sir.
See you in two weeks.
I don't see a lot of people in two weeks.
All right. Adam Clark, approval of resolution requesting legislation for validating and ratifying amendments to the Tiverton Home Rule Charter is voted on at the general election held November 6, 2018. Over to you.
So this is basically the same resolution we've used whenever we've done some amendments. And I usually just put the amendment with all the redlined copy, send it with this letterhead, and forward it to our legislators to get it ratified by the state. Same one that's been used.
Solicitors taking a look? Okay, we're good. They have a motion?
I'll move it.
We have a motion, and we have a second from Counselor Hilton. Any further discussions? One of these was to confirm that vacancies in elected committees, not individual offices, but elected committees, are filled by the next highest vote hitters. And the other was really more in the nature of a type of dramatic cleanup, non-substantive kind of. Okay. So now that Denise is back, we have a motion and a second to name the new canine unit after Justin. Oh, no, that wasn't it. It was to send the.
Cats, the canine unit.
It was to.
It was funny.
These are the two charter changes that were approved in November. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. And Counselor Cook, discussion and possible vote for a town ordinance covering the employee code of conduct. Over to you.
Hey, I put, it was discussed, it's some. Regarding employee code of conduct, I wanted to get it started, that we might need an ordinance, is, you know, ASAP, so that unfortunately, we've had numerous incidents of poor employee conduct, which has not been in the best interest of the town. This will help us to try to stop this type of conduct, and also give the town somewhere to go as far as the payouts and that sort of thing. It's, I only used from the charter review, we had worked on that.
That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah. It doesn't mean that the, it's just for background.
Yes.
I would, you know, I suppose you work with the solicitor to get it correct, or should, does anyone want me to read what it says, or?
Well, I think some of this.
Remember, it's just a proposal, and then we had worked on the language to go into the charter. But this would be an ordinance.
Well, whose comments are these? Jim would tell?
Oh, it's Jim.
Okay. I thought it was yours, Donna.
Yeah, it's very, it's very informal. No, it's, it's his.
Because the last paragraph, we all know that we can't do that, but.
Well.
Well, it depends. It depends on what the situation is, and we.
No, no, but I, you know, as a taxpayer, I guess maybe that's how he felt.
Yeah, okay.
You know, it doesn't mean it's true.
Okay.
So ordinances, you guys can just throw this out there. Wondering if it might make sense before we would have, vote whether to go to public hearing, would, it make more sense to perhaps ask the sponsor to work with the town solicitor to come back with something a little more definitive before we make a decision? Is that? Is there any objection to Donna working with the solicitor on that?
No, I, I think it's good, although I wonder if, if it might be, no, that, whether or not Tim Cavassa might be a good person to talk to, because he writes, you know, he's probably seen these in contracts, or maybe has some good ideas.
And just for clarity, is with this kind of a morals clause, whatever they're called, that would prevent if, if the dismissal termination happens for any of these reasons, then the town, there are no benefits?
Well, I'm not sure.
That's my question.
That's why we have to work with the lawyer to see if we can actually do that.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm happy to help with this, but I think Counselor Hilton is absolutely right. I think that your, your labor counsel is more suited, because I, you know, I might have opinions on this language, I'd be happy to contribute to that discussion. But I think Tim will, will have a better sense of what's enforceable in practice, and so maybe some combination.
All right.
I definitely support it, I just want to make sure it's enforceable. That's.
Well, well, of course. I just didn't know who you wanted me to work with. You know, you want me to work with the labor lawyer?
Tim.
I might suggest, since, since Mr. Cision is on retainer, make the first pass with him.
And then run it by Tim.
And then have it go by Tim.
When we're charged by the hour, we can, and he'll do a great job, I'm sure, of framing the issues and teaming up things that we probably didn't think of. And it has a second pass, you know, of course, the town administrator is going to have probably business comments as well.
Donna, if you want some help, I'd be more than willing to help you.
So you want me to be the shepherd?
Yes, but if you want me, if you want to work.
I can work with you and with Mrs. Chacon, and then we can have it run by. Yeah, that'll be great.
Is that all right?
No, no problem, right? And just don't talk more than.
No, just.
Just two, just you two.
All right. Well, I just thought she might need some support.
All right, so, that's good. Thank you for driving. I think that's good to do a lot of, you know, small steps rather than one big. Okay, bids and requests or proposals, I don't believe we have any. Mr. Administrator, anything you'd like to announce?
No, thank you.
Are you okay?
Fine.
We might set a record tonight. Okay.
Well, maybe.
Town, oh geez, I'm on your, town council announces. Anybody other than me that would like to announce anything?
Oh, I'd like to say that Tricia and I went to the Lions Club dinner on Saturday, and I would like to congratulate all the recipients of the awards. There were teachers from each school, a police officer. There were teachers from each school, a police officer, a fireman, and also a little Compton police officer and fireman. And I'd like to thank everybody for participating, and congratulations to everyone.
Any other, okay. I'll be very quick. I just wanted to report out, we had a special meeting, I guess it was a week ago, March, that would be March 4th. The meeting went long, so that meeting, which was televised and was here in this building, was continued without adjournment, so it went into an administrative recess for about 44 hours and reconvened at the senior center on Wednesday, March 6th. Notice was posted, but because, you know, it was a, it was essentially a continuance of the first meeting. At the second meeting, there was, we didn't have the professional video staff, but we do have the minutes, which were just approved tonight, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that. Those minutes, I was asked to go attend the budget committee meeting the very next day, as in, you know, 18 hours the next day. That budget committee was televised, and at that budget committee meeting, I did attempt to explain what had happened the night before, because there was not, obviously at that time, there was no video and the minutes had not been released. And I informed the budget committee, I think maybe Madam Clerk was there for part of it, that we would get the minutes over to them as soon as possible. So I just wanted you to be aware of that, and I offered to them that if they wanted to have another joint meeting or any other support from us, that we'd be willing to do that. So the, the ball is in their court, although I, I don't believe we're prevented from continuing to have dialogue with, with them, particularly if, you know, new revenue numbers come in or something along those lines.
That's usually what happens, it's just...
I frankly can't remember when the budget committee's true deadline is on the financial town referendum, but I just wanted you to, because it was, I mean, it's happened from time to time, but it was somewhat unique that we continued to meet administratively to, to March 6th.
It's 50, okay.
Yes, it's 50. I have to give it to...
Yes.
Yes. Mr. President, I do have a question.
Sure.
I have heard, and I don't know all the details, but I've heard somewhat, that there is some issue with, still with the police numbers. And so the question is, does that need to get resolved here, or does the town administrator resolve it with the budget committee, or do you resolve it with the budget committee? But how do we, how do we, how do we sort that out with the budget committee?
Yeah, is this sort of the debate on the baseline on some of those items, or is this a new issue?
I think it's a new issue with, right, Jan, is there a new issue with, we have to add another police officer to the budget? Well, that's what...
Why don't we do all the above? We can always, I mean, I, we have to meet the charter deadline, we met that charter deadline, I think with 30 minutes despair, but nothing stops us from making suggestions, right?
Right, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Well, I just didn't know if it was something that, that, well, I'm going to let Jan, Jan looks like he's got something to say, so.
Do you have something to say?
So I think what it comes down to is that the numbers that the treasurer had developed are different from the numbers that ended up in the budget with respect to the salary section of the police department budget. And there have been some exchanges between myself and Justin and myself and the treasurer. I'm still, actually today, I spent, again, quite a bit of time trying to figure out where this all came from. It seems that there was, confusion was created by the fiscal impact analysis that we started to redevelop, I think, September or something like that, is when the first analysis came over. And for some reason, the number of officers was one less than what Denise, the treasurer, came up with in her analysis, and also one less than what the police chief believes should be the number. It's 31 or 32, basically, it's one, one number. Not entirely clear to me which position that is. That's, I'm still trying to figure that out, because there is a question about a half-year salary for a, another probationary officer, there is a question about how many lieutenants there are, and I think there's a fair amount of confusion. Now, all about that, I do think that it can be easily resolved between myself, the treasurer, and Justin in terms of, are we in agreement that, you know, these...
Why Justin, though? Why not all of us?
It's, it's not to exclude anybody, it's just trying to, I think there may be...
No, no insult, this is why...
There may be less of a discrepancy than we think, because I think there may have been a mistake on both sides, whatever it is. I haven't entirely sorted it out, but I think I now know which questions to ask from Denise and Justin that might actually help resolve it. What you want to do with that outcome, I don't know. One option that I had considered is if it was, and if we had resolved this by today, I would have suggested that I could simply clarify in my transmittal, you know, what the change needs to be with the knowledge of the town council. I'm not quite there yet, with my apologies, but we're making headway.
But isn't it contractual, the amount of lieutenants we, like I read it the other day, the amount of lieutenants we need, like, isn't that contractual?
Well, if it is contractual, then, then even so...
Like, look at the contract, figure out how many men we signed for, and that's the number.
Well, actually, that number has, for me, you know, I keep learning, because I didn't hear until very recently about the history with five people being sent to the police ca...
Oh, yeah.
I know, but I wasn't here.
Oh, you weren't here.
And not everybody was here at the time, and so had I known that, I would have known how to add up, you know, five on top of the other positions that we had.
But it's in the contract.
So can I just bring it back, bring it back home a little bit?
No, 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 minimum is not, this is police. It says the amount, right, it says the amount of lieutenants, the amount of...
That's for minimum staffing. Minimum staffing.
Okay, so just...
Not, not the actual payroll.
Let me just keep this, we're not, I don't want to get too far off the agenda on council announcements, but this is a good example of how, as in all budgets, things may change, there may be errors, there may be new numbers, and so I think the answer is airing on the side of more dialogue is probably a good thing. So whose question was, oh, so if we want to put...
I think where this is going is in the direction, and Justin can disagree with me, of what Denise had in her analysis, because that has the number of positions that it was consistent with the preliminary budget request and the backup that's in the binders on that. And I have an explanation, I believe, for why there was a different number in the financial, in the fiscal impact analysis. And I actually think that labor counsel, who did a lot of the work on that analysis, made a mistake, which ended up in one less position, which was, that was actually prior to Justin becoming involved. And then that was picked up and continued in the fiscal impact analysis. So I think this can be relatively easily involved, easily resolved. You know, the positions are pretty clear to me in terms of now, you have one chief, he doesn't count for the fiscal impact analysis, but he does, you know, he's part of, obviously of the overall number, one captain, four lieutenants, eight sergeants, and that includes two detectives, and I believe 18 patrolmen, and, and that should be it. And I don't think there's actually a disagreement about that, it's just, you know, what are the numbers associated with that? And as far as I could tell after yet another analysis today, that's within very little, the range between is not very, very large.
Because I think it's more of a classification issue than...
Well, it's the half a year thing. Didn't we have one for half a year that, that left the academy?
Excuse me?
Okay, so the agenda item is a brief status report.
Never mind.
So can we, I think the answer to the question is all the above. So if so, I don't see any reason why we can't bring anything back to this team, even if it can't change the formal transmittal, it would be, of course, wise to update with new information and send that to the budget committee if that's what you or you or any of us want to do. I also don't think there's anything that stops any of us from going to the budget committee and, you know, talking to them, right? Is that, is that okay?
You would probably want to do it in writing, but...
I'm sorry?
Would probably want to do that in writing.
Well, yeah, I just meant in an individual capacity. Certainly as a body, we would, would want to do that. And, and I didn't hear anybody take up the offer, but I just wanted to report back to, to this team that I invited them, if they wanted another joint workshop or anything like that, that, you know, we'd probably be willing to oblige, but I did not hear that anybody take that request, so. Okay, so...
I just want to note, the, the reason it was me was just because I had done some work with the spreadsheets and had put the number on the, in the budget document, so, and also because to my wife's consternation, when somebody sends me an email, like, why does this look wrong, I'll spend the next three hours trying to figure out why it's wrong. So, I just have a little bit more familiarity with the numbers, that's the only reason I was particularly involved.
Okay. Well, keep scrubbing, nothing wrong with that. Budgets are estimates, and they'll continue to get better as the year goes on. Let's talk about food trucks. Is that you? No?
I put that on the agenda, but I think it was premature.
It's town solicitor.
No, I put it because the town solicitor was going to update, but I think I was a little premature putting that on.
Okay.
I'll put it on the next meeting.
And how about...
So that'll pass without discussion.
I just ask, just as I tend to do, a little more guidance on what the question is with regard to the food trucks. I looked back at my notes remaining, I'm not sure, there, I may be able to dispose of it to your satisfaction, simply by saying, yes, there is now a state process that the Department of Health manages for licensing all food trucks in the state, so town does not have any...
I think, I'm not sure this event, I don't know how this agenda item morphed into this, because this wasn't the question. This was not the, this was not the question. The, the question was, and I don't know that this is that hard, we have these new facilities that we didn't have as facilities before, they've never been assigned to anybody's jurisdiction, like recreational, it's Fogland Beach, like, you know, and, and so the expanded part of Grunell's Beach, I guess, and the abutment need to get assigned to somebody or some group or somebody that has jurisdiction, so that when people want to have events or there's a place to go, or who sets the rules for that place. So to me, it made sense that it would be the Recreation Commission, but like, we'd have to have some language or something that, you know, makes it in their purview. That was sort of the, that was sort of the question. I'm not sure the, it, it sounds like it's turning into a bigger project than it was ever meant to be.
It's, it's just who's in charge of booking them.
And who's going to make the rules for down there?
Yeah.
And if I want tacos, do we get Mexican?
Yeah, pretty, pretty much.
And we have to get Mexican for that.
So could I just ask a question about, so only the booking and we don't really care that the state does the permitting, right?
Well, that's already the state law.
Well, not necessarily. I don't think it's a done deal yet, if I'm, I'm not mistaken. It might...
Sorry, I didn't interrupt. Go ahead, Jan. What I was going to say is the Recreation Commission has already done a food truck program, they used to have it at Fogland, and they've already got the whole thing, and somebody comes in and bids, and they pick the vendor, and they know that they have to have a state license. It, it's not so much that, again, it's not so much the food truck issue, it's just that, you know, it, for example, if you, you know, in the, in the ordinances and in the charter or wherever else, it says, you know, Fogland Beach is under the control of the Recreation Commission.
Why wouldn't this be under the Recreation?
Yeah, I think we just have to vote for it.
But we have to, we have to, but we have to, we have, to Justin's earlier point of things being on paper, somebody needs to put this on paper, that the Recreation Commission, that's who it's going to be, actually is the, like, responsible body.
That's all that was.
That's all it was. That was sort of it.
Because we've had food trucks when we have a policy.
Is your mission clear, or should you choose to...
You don't need to him to do that, but...
Yeah, no, it's not at all clear, but perhaps Jan and I could talk in, in between.
Okay, this needs a sponsor.
To see if there's a...
I'll tell you what, to make, to make this simple, what I'll do is, I'll go get the existing language that identifies other places and say, can we add whatever we're going to call this thing into this language so that that's...
All right, Counselor Hilton will sponsor this item for further action, is that...
I, I will.
Okay.
I will.
We're with you all the way.
And, and there you go.
And the second item is, is simply there to, I, I don't believe this was mentioned at the council, although it's been up before, I don't think there's anything new to report other than it sits in limbo.
Can I ask a legal question here, and I'm not a lawyer, but I'm just curious about this? Part of the reason that the municipal court judge says that they can't hear this is because the enabling legislation doesn't, doesn't give them this power, right? But is it such that, how do I put this? That isn't, is that the sole limit of the municipal court's power? In other words, there are other functions that exist under enabling legislation, right? Here's the enabling legislation that says you have to do this, or this is what you can do. But then they're allowed to, they seem to be allowed to take on other functions and other activities as long as they don't conflict with the, the carrying out of the duties there. So I don't totally understand why, if we've assigned via charter additional things to the municipal court, am I making any sense by my, by the question I'm asking?
I, I think so. I'm not sure what other things the court takes on, but, you know, I, I think that you have to view this in light of jurisdiction, right? And jurisdiction is a very strict, you know, issue when it comes to courts, and if they don't have jurisdiction to hear a matter, they simply cannot and will not hear it. And I think that's what your municipal judge was arguing, that whether the town had, had suggested that this is the appropriate place, the state law does not allow municipal courts to hear charter complaints, and therefore he has no, has no ability to hear it.
Except that a charter complaint isn't this, it's not a state offense, it's not a...
That's right.
It, it, it's not, it doesn't fall into the category of the things that the state... I, I'm just asking the question, because it just sort of seems to me like if the, if the charter, if the charter says, even though this isn't a traditional court responsibility, right, it's outside of the state purview of what court does, it's outside of, like, like what local jurisdiction of what a court does, but the charter's asking the municipal court to take on this extra responsibility. Can they do it? I, I'm just, I'm just asking, it just seems silly that we have no process right now for a charter complaint. That, that to me is the part that seems to be the most, you know...
I think, I think the, you know, the, again, I, I don't know if I'm answering your question here, but I think, or my sense, is that this becomes more confusing, because people tend to think of American, the American system of government as, as evolving from the citizenry and then moving up to town, state, federal. And so when you go from state to federal, you have this constitutional, constitutional provision that says, you know, anything we don't claim under the constitution is therefore reserved to the states to deal with. That doesn't go down the next level, right? In Rhode Island, at least. Rhode Island, despite having something called Home Rule Charter, doesn't have the equivalent. They, Home Rule Charter is what the legislature deems you able to deal with, not everything that, that the state doesn't do. It's, it's, it's by, by authorization, not by omission. So the, the problem we have is that we don't really have a grassroots control at the Tiberton level. What we have is what Rhode Island lets you do, you get to do. And Home Rule Charter is deceptive in that sense, so it's not really, it's not really the same thing. So instinctively, I think you're right, that we should, that that's the way it should work, but it, it doesn't, and if the, the general assembly, those four, four of the five people you had here tonight, if they haven't told your judge that he gets to hear charter complaints, or, and I'm still not sure, he said he can't hear all charter complaints. I think that there may be a question about whether it's certain charter complaints or certain types of charter complaints, and I haven't pursued this with him, so I don't know, but...
Well, we would have heard this if it wasn't, if the situation wasn't what it is. Because normally, we, we hear charter complaints.
Oh, correct. That's right, that's right.
Well, it starts...
It starts here.
Yeah. But the charter is ratified by the general assembly, right? So they've seen it, and they've said, you can have this power, in my view.
Yeah.
I, I, I agree that it is a absolutely fascinating question, and, and, you know, the complainant, I think, has the right to go pursue some, some answer to this question if the complainant so chooses.
Okay.
Okay, so we are now ready, oh, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk? Nothing?
All right. You can make a motion.
Yeah, I'll move it to go into executive session, starting with the town administrator under Rhode Island General Law 42465A2 for collective bargaining with IAFF. Town administrator again, 42465A2. Town administrator again, 42465A2, litigation, Monroe.
If I may, Counselor.
We have to vote any tomorrow.
I, that's true, but I'll, also, I don't have updates on two and three, so unless there is the council's desire to talk about this, you don't have to add those in.
Okay, so I already moved the first one, so.
Second on the first one. Yes.
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 And also for, under request of Counselor DiMederos, under state law 42465A1, town administrator performance evaluation notice has been given.
Yes.
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 Second.
Did you get a motion?
I moved that.
He did.
She just seconded it, retroactively, yes.
I didn't do it right away. You were right.
Okay, I've got, did you four ten o'clock?
Yeah, I'll be right back, I'm taking a lot of my disease.